Guys, it's cold. Yeah, it's kind of...
All right, if we could call this work session to order. And if I could first call up our director from Department of Public Works, Mr. Steve Walsh. And if the council could turn to page fourteen, we'll tackle fiscal matter three. Good afternoon, Mr. Walsh. Page fourteen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with New Horizons Supported Services Incorporated to provide electronics collection and recycling services at the county's residential drop-off centers at Cockeysville, Hailthorpe, and Eastern Sanitary Landfill. Contract commenced January sixteenth of this year. Will continue through April first. May not exceed $25,000 unless the council approves it. If approved, the contract would continue through June thirtieth, 2023. Compensation may not exceed the amount appropriated for these services during the entire contract term, and that estimated compensation is $1,160,500 during the entire term of the contract. I think the most interesting thing, and the auditors recognized it, is that in 2015, the county actually received ten cents a pound in revenue for the material, and now we're actually paying thirty-one cents a pound. So it's interesting to see how the recycling market just totally changed in a period of four years.
Questions or comments from the council, this matter three? Councilman Crandall?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mr. Walsh. And I, too, was kind of like, man, we're only getting ten cents for our stuff, but we're paying thirty-one cents for other people's stuff that comes to the... Not other people, but our citizens' stuff that comes to the landfill. I'm not sure of the duration of that 2015 contract, but is it... As we go into renegotiate it, whenever it comes up, is this something that we should look at, maybe tying in the current market rate? So is the... And I know the markets fluctuate quite a bit. Do we want to take a look at that moving forward?
Yeah, we certainly can.
Okay. And I'm going to make... My second question, and I'm going to make an assumption, and maybe even answer it for you, in saying that we are... We're hiring a company to take away CRTs and flat screens, which are recyclable, and there is a market for the materials that are inside of those machines. Is... I'm going to say it's... I would imagine, and make the assumption, that it is a cumbersome and probably not a cost-effective process for us to sort those things out from the electronics dumpsters and try to recycle those and put them into the 2015 contract?
I'll have to get back with you on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, let me follow up on that.
Did you understand my question? I don't know if it was posed very well, but...
I do understand your question. Let me follow up with the exact way that happens in the field.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Mupeteca?
Mr. Walsh, I just want to thank you for the outstanding job you're doing in the Second District of Baltimore County.
Thank you very much. I'll relay that to the staff.
Any other questions or comments from the council for Mr. Walsh on fiscal matter three? All right, then why don't we do miscellaneous business item number two, Resolution thirty-eight dash nineteen? That's the addendum for the Baltimore County Water Supply and Sewer Plan Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We bring to the council for introduction a resolution to amend the water sewer plan, otherwise known as Cycle Thirty-Six, and this is amendment to the plan. The rules of engagement, so to speak, are documented in the executive order dated April eleventh, 1990. There's a process by which petitioners can petition the county for changes to the plan. So we got two petitions in this year. They went before the planning board. The planning board held a... I'm sorry. Public Works, the Environmental Department staff, and the planning staff provided staff report on it. It goes to the planning board for consideration. The planning board held a public hearing on July nineteenth, 2018, on the amendment, and they actually adopted the proposed changes on September sixth, 2018. Some of the specifics of the plan are as follows. First item is a petition on forty-four twenty-seven Butler Road. That was item number eighteen dash oh-one. It's in the Third Council District. It is outside of the urban rural demarcation line, and it is outside of the Metro District boundary, but within a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer. The request is for permission to make one house connection for water quality purposes due to a failed well. But the staff recommendations are included in your package. The second item was on thirty-seven twelve Perry Hall Road. That's item number eighteen dash two. It's in the Fifth Council District. It is inside the urban rural demarcation line and inside the Metropolitan District Line. And the request is for a connection also to water and sewer, which is basically right in front of the property.
Councilman Katz?
Yes, thank you. The Butler Road property, is it their well isn't working, or is it sodium in the water?
It's a sodium issue with the well.
Now, the Butler Road is a state road?
Butler Road is a state road.
And have they gone through the state program, which gives homeowners who's wells are polluted with salt, that they can... The state will put in an RO system, et cetera?
There is some documentation in your package about that. They were working with the state and decided this was an option for them as well, and they decided to make the request through this process for the connection.
So there's nothing stopping them from... So are you telling me that the state did offer them money, and they opted to be hooked up to public water instead?
I just read in the documentation there that from a letter from the applicant that they were denied by the state.
Well, if they were denied by the state, it's because their level of sodium was not above the standard. So I mean, if their salt level is below, they wouldn't be eligible for the program. But if they were concerned about the salt problem, why wouldn't they then put in an RO system?
They certainly could.
Yeah, and are we... Who's paying for this connection?
The applicant.
Completely.
Completely.
And how far are we going past the Urteil?
Past the Urteil? They are within the hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer of the Urteil. It's a pretty good distance, though. I don't know the exact footage.
You said within the hundred-and-fifty-foot what?
Buffer of the... I'm sorry, the Metropolitan District Boundary.
Now, is the buffer people in the buffer eligible for city water? I really don't know, that's why I ask. I really don't know.
And I apologize, my expert on this matter was actually not here today, so I'm winging it a little bit. But the hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, as my understanding, is an area that, in the past, has been looked at as sort of an area where individual services might have been offered in the past, because it's certainly close to provide a connection. I can get you a specific history of that hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, and I don't have that right now, but we'll get it.
Yeah, I would like to speak with somebody about that. We're voting, what, Monday on the...
No, we certainly understand that the efforts to preserve the Urteil and the Metropolitan Boundary are substantial. We get that. Bottom line is, this is a process. Multiple agencies commented on it, and it's up to y'all to make a decision on it. So we certainly get the controversy about allowing anything outside of the Urteil. This is a single-family home with a problem with a well, so...
I...
You know, the concern about development outside is certainly a separate issue, but...
I just think that... I can't imagine that it's going to be less expensive to hook up than it would be to put an RO system in. I know it does have a yearly maintenance, but...
I think we would agree with that. The expense of doing this is much higher than doing an RO system. Absolutely.
And would someone in your office know what they're thinking, or why they want to do this?
I don't know. I don't want to put words in the applicant's mouth, and I'm not sure if the applicant is here. Actually, the applicant is here. Maybe she can speak afterwards, or during the public hearing part of it.
Oh, great, I didn't know. Good, okay, good. See, I didn't know.
All right, Councilman Marks, do you have something?
Yeah, I just want to thank your staff for looking into this. And this is a part of Perry Hall that's semi-rural, as you know. Zoning primarily is DR-1, DR-2. And I know there's a lot of issues, and you're looking comprehensively at this region, so I just want to thank you for your professionalism and your diligence here.
Any other questions or comments before we go to the public speaker? Is everybody good? All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Thanks.
And then I'd like to call up our first public speaker of the day, of course, Resolution thirty-eight dash nineteen, Kristin Scotto. And if you want to come up and just... Right up to where actually Mr. Walsh was just... You can come right up to the speaker. You have up to three minutes to speak. Thank you for coming in.
So ladies and gentlemen, I just have... This is a very unique situation that I wanted to just share a little bit more with you about where I'm coming from, and I'm happy to answer any more questions. I'm here to advocate for my family, including my children, my home, and my property by seeking your consideration and approval of a single-house water connection. Because my well has been contaminated by road salt... Of course, I'm on Butler Road. It's a state road. My family and I are continuously faced with multifaceted issues. In the interest of protecting my family from proven serious health risks, I've purchased and consumed only bottled water for several years. I have the biceps to show it. Hauling ten gallons of water a week, just to consume. This does not, however, address bathing water, which causes skin irritation for several of my family members. And the chlorides in the road salt cause accelerated corrosion, which is obviously the biggest issue, really. And in my home, it's led to the replacement of three badly leaking faucets, and more to come. Corroded radiator valves, one of which completely deteriorated, spewing gallons of water into the foundation of our home. My pressure tank for my well was so badly corroded, it had to be replaced after just five years of a very well-maintained life. I do work with Bruce Gallup, a very well-known corporation, and they've taken great care of it. There's nothing else that they could do. My pressure tank was so badly... Every single metal appliance in our home is susceptible to this corrosion: dishwasher, washing machine, my boiler, which was brand-new when I moved into the home. And I've been advised to proactively replace all metal plumbing in my 1960s home, including the cast-iron main drain. As you can see from the map, I'm assuming that is included with your paperwork there, my situation is unique in that actually a corner of my property falls within a hundred-and-fifty-foot margin, as Mr. Walsh stated. There's actually a second parcel, of which I am now complete owner of, and that actually touches the Metropolitan District Line. And I'm located, it's just seven-hundred-and-fifty feet from an existing water main, making a water connection entirely feasible from an engineering standpoint. And my well is roughly one-hundred feet down gradient from the non-curved, drain-free Butler Road, which is widely known to be a heavily-salted, state-maintained emergency route. The salt's not going anywhere anytime soon. Of course, my children ride the bus. That's not my fight. I want to be safe. We need to be able to drink our water, though. And last year, in the interest of upholding the Urteil, and really... This has been three years already that I have been pursuing this avenue, in terms of money, in terms of the environment. This is the one solution to be finished. I'll have drinking water right out of the faucet. I'll have no more corrosion in my home. This is... I'm right adjacent to the Delaware Run, so all the issues that are along with that. I'm trying to do this with as much integrity as possible for my family, my property, but also I've been a citizen of a community, in this community, for thirty years. And I'm not going anywhere. So this is truly a collaborative effort that I'm trying here.
Great, thank you. Councilman Katz?
Yeah, you said... How far is it? Seven-hundred-and-fifty feet, is that what you said?
From the connection.
Oh, from the connection, yeah.
From the line itself.
And from the Urteil line, it's what?
From the Urteil... Well, it's less than that. So you figure the Metropolitan District Line... Excuse me, math is not my forte. That one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, again, a corner of my property actually touches that. So at the time of the amendment, that being authored, I was in the process of purchasing that parcel that touches. So I am now full owner.
So the house itself is not within the hundred-and-fifty. It's part of your property?
Correct.
Okay. Why wouldn't you... I've seen the damage that this salt does. You know, your ice maker, your freezers, your wash machines, your refrigerate... Pipes, as you said. Why didn't you pursue an RO system and whatever other services are needed so that you have the best water?
I have that, of course, was the first thing that was recommended to me by our well filtering... Our well servicing company. A lot of reasons. It is extremely expensive. The lifetime of the... I mean, you're talking about teeny-tiny membranes that require a lot of maintenance and diligence, vigilance. Value of my home, again, this is my forever home, and RO systems can bring down the value of the property. And this is... I have, you know, I have a lot of contacts. I have a huge network of people that do live in the area, and this is something that... It's just not the ideal situation. I am also understanding that with an RO system, sure, it takes the salt out of my well, but it puts it right back into the land behind me. So in terms of an environmental solution, it's just not... Again, I want to do this with integrity. This is, you know, I'm right next to the Delaware Run, highly aware of this situation. I don't want to continue... I just don't want to be a part of it anymore.
Do you have any idea what it's going to cost you to do the connection?
Not as much as an RO system.
RO's around fourteen dollars. And then the yearly maintenance, what, five hundred to a thousand? Yeah. So... And to be honest with you, I have city water. I would rather drink the well water than the city water, actually. But... So are you sure it's going to be less to install water pipes?
Yes. Now, I'm not a professional.
I'm thinking, wow.
And these are based on conversations, really. Quite honestly, you know, and that's what I'm here for, is to be a completely forthcoming. I don't have estimates for the hookup. I do have estimates for an RO system. And I do have a very good idea of what it would do to the value of my home. And so that's where I'm coming from. My main argument, too, is obviously the health of my family is first and foremost. But you're looking at money, and you're looking at dollars. You're looking at what's the... Replacing the plumbing in my home, and an RO system... You know, replacing an RO system...
I don't want to hold the council up anymore. Will you give my office a call, or the across from you second... He's raising his hand. If you could go over and give him your contact information and all I can say... I'll say it again. Good well water is better than city water. I can tell you that. I'm on city water, and I've been on well water, so I just... You know, that's my opinion.
And I certainly appreciate your opinion, and with all due respect, nothing beats... I will take anything over the water that's damaging my home and my children.
Councilman Jones?
No, I just wanted to help the gentle lady out. I would imagine at some point you want some certainty. Regardless of what it costs, you know that this is a remedy that will fix your problems, and hopefully you won't have any in the future. So I can appreciate your position.
Thank you. However, I'm not going anywhere.
No, 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 but...
You know, I... Anything... I am here to do this with integrity, but also to be finished.
Let me just discuss the precedent that you're setting. This is the issue, and there are many, many homes in northern Baltimore County that have the RO systems. And so I don't want this to be an excuse for bringing city water. And as I said, we could...
Yeah, I'd suggest maybe you guys can have a conversation after this, before the vote.
Please, please, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Councilman. All righty. Why don't we next call up Rob O'Connor, Director, Office of OIT? If council could turn to page seven, we'll look at fiscal matter one. Page seven. Good afternoon, Mr. Connor.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the council. Administration is requesting approval of three contracts to provide locating an emergency maintenance service for approximately two-hundred miles of existing fiber optic, as well as construction for new fiber through the county. Three contractors are Advantage Engineering, KCI Communications, and Skyline Technology. Each contract commences upon council approval, continues for three years, and will renew automatically for five additional one-year periods with the option for a further extended term of one-hundred-and-twenty days.
Questions or comments from the council for Mr. Connor? Everybody good? Easy enough? Thank you, Mr. Connor. All right, why don't we call up Colonel David Fodorhour? Council could turn to page one. We'll do Bill two-dash nineteen. Good afternoon, Colonel.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Well, we obviously... We had some issues with our weapons, and police departments requesting a little bit over $1.4 million in reference to replacing the previous FNS handgun, which was a forty caliber, and we're going to the Glock seventeen, nine-millimeter. And what's the history, or...
I already know it.
So in August, we found... We were contacted by the Arizona Department of Public Safety in reference... They also carried the same handgun that we carried. They found that they had an issue with this FNS handgun, where when the gun was out of battery, is what it's called, it means the slide is back just a little bit. And the trigger's pulled, it would not fire. And then if the gun at some point was hit, jolted, the round could wind up going off in there, and that's obviously creating a safety issue. So once they notified us of this, we reached out, you know, to FN. Clearly had an engineering issue. They promised that they would come up with a solution for us. They promptly came in and replaced all the strikers in the handgun, which is the actual piece that hits the round in the bullet, with one from a nine-millimeter gun, and we carry a forty gun. And their thought process on that was, it's less pressure going forward, and this out-of-battery thing, it was a temporary solution. They promised us a permanent solution within two weeks, and months went by without a permanent solution. Now, they did replace all these strikers, but again, got a striker from a different weapon now in the weapon that we're carrying. So in the meantime, while we're waiting for their full solution, we had a situation where the roll pin in the trigger of the gun came out the range, causing the trigger to fall off. And it's difficult to fire a gun without a trigger. So when we researched this, we found out this was actually the fourth time we've had this happen. And all of it was in a controlled environment on the range. We did not have any situations on the road. At that point, based on the striker situation, where we did not have a solution, and the fact that we're having this roll pin issue, a decision was made with the county administrative officer and the chief of police. We had to go with an emergency purchase for new guns throughout the police department, corrections in the sheriff's department as well. What we ended up doing was, we did a quick little research since this was... We needed a quick turnaround on this. We did not have a chance to do training and evaluation that we would normally do on such a big purchase. So we found what was most of law enforcement carrying throughout the country. That's a Glock product. It's all been tested. And they have about six-hundred thousand guns on the street throughout the United States. And we did compare the Glock with a couple others. The Glock came out ahead, and we went forward with the Glock purchase based on their reliability that we had. This week is actually the final conversion. We have gone forward and converted already, again, this being an emergency. And we have about eighteen hundred finished. Actually, I guess I'm one of the last to go. I'll go tomorrow to do this conversion. So in addition to that, obviously, there's new holsters, things that go to fit this gun. And the Glock, you know, there's been some reports about misfires, accidental fires, things like that. The Glock is one of those guns that you have to pull the trigger to take apart. So we ended up buying the pieces. I don't have the price on here, so it was just shy of $20,000 to where it'll be inserted into the gun... $20,000, to where it'll be inserted into the gun ultimately, so that you know that the gun is empty before you pull the trigger to take it apart.
Questions, comments from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Colonel. I have two questions. How many of these weapons will be going to the sheriff's department? Do you know that number?
I have it, I think it's around 80. Let me look at my notes real quick.
So, no, we met with them about a year and a half ago, and some of their guns were in pretty sad shape, their holsters were falling apart.
It is 80, they all now have brand-new guns as well, brand-new holsters, we train them as well, yes.
Oh, good, good to know. And I have a question, actually, the auditors, I think, have, maybe it's better answered by Lauren, but if you look at the last paragraph on page two, it says, "A supplemental appropriation will affect ongoing spending subject to the Spending Affordability Committee FY19 guideline. Following approval of this agenda item, the FY 2019 budget will approximately be $2 million under the guideline." But just, can you explain what that means?
It's getting close.
So everybody understands it.
So when we do spending affordability, we come up with a guideline, and depending on what the budget is, there's a difference. So after this additional funding, the budget will still be $200, $2 million under the recommended guideline.
That's fine.
Okay. You understand that, Corv?
Yeah, yeah, we're fine. Councilman Marcus and Crandall.
That's good.
Thank you very much. I want to reference a report that came out on January 3rd of this year, and this is what this company said. "Is our opinion the vulnerable? Can a police department's decision to move away from the FNS 40 is more politically motivated than based on the technical performance of the product?" And I read this, and I don't sense any sorts of remorse, any sort of sense of concern. I sincerely hope that we consider this when we look at future purchases from this company. You know, the statement just seems very nasty, to be very frank, when, you know, I think all of us up here trust the professional judgment of the members of the police department.
Yeah, when this first happened five years ago, there was a full vetting process. But the one thing that happened in this case is, this was what they call first-generation gun. This was the first, you know, the first year for this type of gun, and, you know, lesson learned as far as that goes, you need to do something tried and true. That was other decision-makers at that point, and I can tell you, under Chief Sheridan and certainly this administration, that's why we went with this Glock. It's been around, it's five different versions, and they just keep improving and improving. So, you know, we're very disappointed in the customer service aspect, and there are certainly other things behind the scenes that are potentially still going on in us dealing with FN. So, it's been unfair to the taxpayers that we've had.
Agreed, yeah, totally agreed. Councilman Crandall?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Colonel, I'm just going to echo what you just said, it just seems like we got a bad deal here. What, to your knowledge, what is the normal lifespan of a handgun when a law enforcement agency makes a purchase?
We'd certainly like to get 10 years out of a gun. And in this particular case, it was warranted to about 50,000 rounds. And when, you know, I can, I still carry this gun, and I could take it out, and it will fire, but it's just these engineering defects that are unacceptable at this point.
Is there anything pertinent in our contract where we have the ability for some sort of For, I mean, we paid for the weapons, they're obviously flawed. Has there been any effort from the law office, either your council or the county law office, to look into getting some sort of compensation back?
Yes, sir, we are doing just that.
Okay, okay, good. Well, I do know, in talking with friends in law enforcement and firearms enthusiasts, that a Glock is known as one of the more reliable weapons out there, so it's probably, you know, a good choice for the department to make, and I think I can speak for all of us, when we just pray, you know, every day, that these weapons don't have to leave a holster unless our men and women in blue are at the range. So, thank you for your service.
We pray the same, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All righty, thank you, thank you, Colonel. Okay, now if we could call up our Director of Department of Aging, Ms. Laura Riley, and if the council could turn to page 10, fiscal matter two, page 10. Good afternoon, Ms. Riley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with AJ Fits Unlimited LLC doing business as a perfect fit assisted living to provide services for eligible county residents age 62 and older. The contract will commence upon approval, continue through June 30th of 2019, and then may be renewed for two additional one-year periods. Understand there were also some questions, if I can address those. We did have a waiting list for several years, but recently the state did a reallocation of funds, and through their new formula, we were able to get more money, so we did clear our waitlist. And presently, we need to get more assisted livings to have the beds to then put more people into. So it's a two-pronged approach right now to get the word out about the additional funding and the services.
Any questions or comments from the council, from Ms. Riley? Councilwoman Potoka?
Hi, Ms. Riley, thank you. Question, I see that there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine assisted living facilities listed. Are they...
Actually, there's 25, I believe.
25?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. I missed the second page. And in your opinion, are they equally dispersed throughout the county?
As much as we can get them, we do market every year to all of the assisted livings who are licensed and ask them to come and have contact with us so that we can do business. If we find an area of the county that's not getting as many, we will try and go actually door-to-door and ask them to participate in the program. But they do need to meet certain criteria, so sometimes that doesn't always work out geographically.
And this is a very important program. We're projected to be close to 230,000 older adults here in Baltimore County. So, we're coming right at you.
Yes. Hopefully, we'll be ready.
Thank you.
Any other, Councilman Catch?
Is it true to be eligible for Medicaid? You can't have, is Medicaid involved in this?
No. This is not Medicaid-funded. This is state funding through the Maryland Department of Aging, and it's for the middle income, not the low income, not the high income, but more of those who struggle right in between.
Is the federal government, no, it's state money?
This is state money, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Director Riley, I really appreciate you coming in. Thanks. All right, why don't the council turn to page four? We'll do bill 6-19, Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill 6-19 is for zoning regulation for uses permitted in an RC2 zone. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Richardson's Farm. It's a very large farm, they grow locally and sell locally, they're on Ebenezer Road in my district. They currently bake and sell their own bakery goods, from bread to pies to cakes, and they bake these items at night because they don't have room during the day to bake, because they're a full-functioning store that opens at 8:00 in the morning and they close 6:00 in the evening. So they currently have a building within, I don't know, about 50 to 100 feet from the current store, and they would like to put their bakery in there. They already have the heat, the water, all they have to do is move the ovens over there. But currently, it's an RC2 zone, which would now, would not allow it. So I'm asking that this be, this was drafted to limit the scope, and it would have a special exception, and the baked items can only be sold within the store. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will support this, and they employ 120 people, and they're a great business for my district, and I'm hoping that we can accommodate them to keep us in, to keep them in the district.
Any questions or comments for Councilwoman Evans? Councilman Catch?
And we talked about this earlier, we've worked out.
Yes, there will be an amendment on Monday, yes, which will fine-tune the location.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for Councilwoman Evans? Everybody good?
Thank you.
All righty. Then our last order of business today, if the council could turn to page five, bill 7-19, and Councilman Potoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone that has come out today to show interest in this bill. The purpose of bill 7-19 is to amend the current zoning regulations, which have a clear oversight in the drafting. The oversight has resulted in the lack of any setback requirement for a commercial kennel in a residential zone, including RC zones, and it compromises much of the northwest area of Baltimore County. Under current regulations, commercial kennels are subject to 200-foot setback in commercial zones, but inexplicably have no setback requirement in residential zones. And while private kennels must maintain a 200-foot setback in residential zones, larger and more intrusive commercial kennels are not subject to any setback whatsoever. Because kennels pose an inherent adverse effect on neighboring properties, a minimum setback in residential zones is only logical. The fact that the county's zoning regulations entirely omit setbacks for commercial kennels in residential zones is a major inconsistency and will cause serious adverse impacts in our communities. Further, back in September of 2001, in its final report on the amendments to the zoning regulations regarding kennels and animal boarding places, the planning board suggested a 500-foot setback for commercial kennels in RC zones. While bill 7-19 does not call for a 500-foot setback, it does correct the inconsistency in zoning regulations by applying a standard minimum setback of 200 feet to this use in the RC zone. I'm also offering an amendment for this to be retroactive to January 1, 2019, and just for illustrative purposes, last week, my legislative aide, Carlos Gonzalez, and I measured out, Mr. Gonzalez, could you go to the 50-foot setback point from where, So, Mr. Chair, from where you're sitting, Mr. Gonzalez is 50 feet away from you. So, that's a 50-foot setback. If Mr. Gonzalez were to move four times from where he is, that would be a 200-foot setback. If he were to go 10 times, that would be a 500-foot setback. And so, as you can see, if you had 18 canines, which a commercial kennel might have, right at that point, and you live next door, it's intrusive. And so I urge my fellow council members to support this bill.
Questions or comments from the council, for Councilwoman Potoka?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Evans?
Thank you so much. I have already had a conversation with Mr. Potoka. The only thing that's troubling to me about this is, I get in moving forward, if you wanted to put this legislation in, I wouldn't have any objection to that, but I believe that this legislation has already been formed for an existing business right now, correct? And so I pulled the paperwork on it, I tried to do my due diligence. I guess the first question is, they applied for a permit and they received it, they applied for a license and they received it, they went through the special exception and they got it, they had to put a fence up, they did that, and the owners purchased the property for this intent to run this business. So, I have a problem with putting a stipulation on, you would actually be pulling the rug out from underneath of a business. Now, if this was moving forward, I would agree to that, but you saying that you want this retroactive for anybody else that's already there, I don't agree with that and I won't support it, because it, when you're a businessperson, the one thing that you want is, and I say this all the time with businesses, you want certainty. So if you come to the county and you say, "I'd like to apply for a license, and this is why, and this is what I'm going to be doing, and I'm going to be training dogs, boarding dogs, I have a pretty, you know, the license application," and they were very forthright in everything that they were going to be doing, they were given that, and then had to go through the special exception process, and also were granted that. So, I don't see how someone can purchase a property to run a business, certainly you couldn't run this type of business in a more suburban neighborhood. We don't even have lots, to a high extent, we're just saying, most of our lots are 50-foot lots for the people that we represent, so, but I understand what you're trying to do, but I'm just saying that it's pulling the rug out from underneath of a business that has been granted permission from the county to do exactly what they're doing. Now, if there's an issue with barking dogs, or this, or that, maybe there's something that needs to be revisited, you know, with the neighbors and the owner, but I haven't heard that's the issue. So, I wouldn't be able to support this if this is the reasoning why you brought this forth. I mean, it's just not...
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. What I would say to you is that if you, or any of my colleagues on this council, were to come to me as a colleague and have an incident, have an issue in your district that was intrusive to the community, and you were trying to prevent that from happening, and you came to me, I would support that.
Well, I get what you're saying about being, I don't know what you mean by intrusive, because I haven't been shown any evidence, like, dogs are barking all night, I've been told that, when the dogs go outside, and I don't have a dog in the fight, I don't know the owner, don't know the property owner, literally don't have a dog in the fight. But, if, I understand they have handlers, and for every eight dogs that are there, somebody's out in the yard with them, dogs aren't just left in runs all day, so I get that you're saying it's intrusive, but the county said they could do it. The county gave permission for them to be intrusive.
We've received, I'm happy to share these letters with you, we've received, you know, quite a few letters that residents that are here today, I believe, that are going to share some of their concerns. So, we're here today.
Good, and I look forward to hearing them, but they need to know what the law is. I understand that people are upset, that maybe this isn't what you wanted to live next door to or around, but the law is the law, and the law said that they could be there and they could do this. So, I have a problem with going against the law in Baltimore County.
I would say that...
Especially for a business, when people have invested in a substantial amount of money.
No question. And so, I would say that the planning board in 2001 looked at this, and they said, "Wow, this really should be 500 feet." And the planning board gave it quite a bit of thought, and so we've got an oversight...
But the county didn't adopt that. It's not, it's not in the regulation. That was a suggestion by the planning board.
It was a suggestion, and it's a suggestion that I think should have been adopted, and I'm trying to correct it for the second district.
And again, I would support this moving forward, but for a business that is doing this now, if they've already been given permission, then I believe they should be allowed to run their business.
And I would, well, I would say further that the adoption, the non-adoption in 2001, I believe, was probably an oversight rather than done with intent.
And it couldn't, it may have been, but I wasn't in office and I need to review, so we can't, you know, take blame for that.
I have a question, Councilman Potoka. Well, first of all, Councilman Jones was, what's the address of this property in question?
2705 Spring Hill, is that correct?
Uh-huh. 2705 Green Spring Valley Road.
So it's 2705 Green Spring Valley Road?
Mm-hmm.
So, question for you, Councilman Potoka, is as you illustrated, you know, 50 feet down, how many homes border this property, and what's the average per foot distance between this property versus all the other homes around it?
I'm looking, bear with me, I'm looking it up on the map right now.
So, I'm looking actually at the RC2 map, and so, if there were houses that were clustered around in a circle of this property, then the 50 feet might apply more, but...
There's no, there's no homes on one side.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking for all these homes that... Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking for all these homes that border this property
Where are they?
In the proximity of fifty feet, I'm having a little trouble identifying them.
Well, we'll hear from, we'll have testimony, I think, there's folks that are willing to provide testimony on that.
According to this map, only four people can live within fifty feet of this home, this business. I don't know if I, I'm pretty sure I have an updated map. So, if people are here to testify and they don't live there, I mean, I want to, I want to hear from the people that live right around there. Not that I would change my mind, but according to this map, there's only two or three residents anywhere near this facility.
School lane?
Those two or three residents are important residents of the second district, and I'm obligated to look out for the best interest of the second district of Baltimore County, irrespective if it's one, two, or three.
Councilman Katz?
Our job is to pass laws. I don't want you to be confused about what we do here, we are legislators, and we pass laws. And I'm looking at a permit and a license that was approved, and it said there must be a fenced area. There is, is there? I don't even know who I'm talking to, fenced area. And distance in feet from animal enclosure to nearest property line, fifty feet. We gave somebody permission to do this.
Councilman Katz?
Is it in operation right now?
Yes.
I do not know the extent to which it is.
Do you know how many dogs they could have there at one time?
I think up to eighteen.
Thank you.
Councilman Marks?
Thank you. Councilman Patoka, in your short time here, you've shown yourself to be a very intelligent, earnest, excellent council member, and everyone in this audience should know, he really does care for you. So, thank you. I just wanted to ask you, so, in your opinion, we have exhausted all of our remedies, and there's nothing that can be done in terms of soundproofing or anything other than this to kind of ameliorate the situation?
I think the only thing that we can do at this point is create distance.
Okay.
And like I said earlier, the planning, the planning board recommended five hundred feet. That's based on planning practices, and that was recommended in two thousand and one, based on sound planning principles.
Thank you.
Councilman Katz?
Is, is the barking the problem? Is it the noise?
I think that there are, in fact...
While you're looking, we passed a bill about a year ago, year and a half ago, which requires that the county animal shelter, if the decimal level was above fifty-five at the neighboring homes, that the Baltimore County Animal Shelter had to build a sound barrier, so, but that was simply a county facility, not private.
Well, let me just, Mr. Chair, if I could...
Yes.
Let me just read planning recommendations from September two thousand and one in its final report, and I'll just read, "Resource Conservation Zones." The planning board recommends that commercial kennels be permitted by special exception in all resource conservation zones except RC five, which is principally a residential zone, and RC twenty and RC fifty, where commercial uses are generally prohibited by state and critical areas policies. The planning board believes that prohibiting commercial kennels and other resource conservation zones is neither necessary nor beneficial to pet owners. Dog owners deserve the option to board their pets in commercial kennels that include outdoor runs. A run is an area where dogs have the ability to run off-leash. Resource conservation zones may be well-suited to commercial kennels if certain conditions are met that will, again, minimize noise impacts on the surrounding property owners. Because RC zones with larger lots are more rural in character than DR zones, outdoor runs may be appropriate in cases if sound and odor are controlled. Therefore, in addition to the basic conditions required for the approval of special exceptions, the planning board suggests establishing a five hundred foot setback from the nearest residentially-used property as well as sound and odor-controlled performance standards. In addition, maintenance of well and septic systems in these, in these zones is crucial to the planning board recommends requiring outdoor dog runs be covered in such a manner as to divert rainwater away from run floods or aid in proper well and septic maintenance. Any commercial kennels that utilize private sewage disposal is subject to the review of Department of the Environment.
Thank you. Other, other questions or comments from the council? We have thirty public speakers, but before we get to our public speakers, I want to make sure the council doesn't have any other questions, comments, any other issues before we get to our public speakers. Everybody good? Alright, so, when we do the public speakers, obviously, we have thirty speakers, we'll allow up to three minutes for each speaker. If somebody says basically what you were about to say, you can always yield your time, or you can just say what I was going to say has been already said, or I'm for this or against this, so, if you want to use all three minutes, of course, that's up to you, or if you want to yield some time, that's okay as well. When I call your name, you just want to come on up to the dais, and then, second person can sit close to Chris. Chris, if you want to just wave your hand or something so everybody knows. Okay, that way we can move this process along. Alright, so, our first public speaker is Mary Frances Dale, followed by Tiffany Sterns. So, Mary, if you want to come on up, and then Tiffany, if you want to sit by Chris inside the, whatever we want to call it, batter's box. On deck circle, even better. Alright, thank you, Mr. Bostwick. And, good afternoon, Mrs. Dale.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Frances Dale, I'm co-owner of Follow My Lead. I previously owned a doggy daycare in Baltimore City for four years. That daycare was your typical mainstream loud warehouse-style daycare. Too many dogs packed in the space provided with a small outdoor pen that we dubbed the yard. I faced many difficulties in that environment, such as noise, smell, scuffles, fights, stress, and illness. It was not until Tiffany Sterns came to me as a client in the winter of two thousand and fifteen, that I'm forever grateful for, and she changed how I forever, how I will forever know dogs and what their true needs are. It was impossible to, it was impossible to unlearn all that I had been learning from Tiffany, resulting in me leaving that typical dog daycare industry forever. I have since made a vow that I will never return to that style of dog care again. My own dogs will never return to that style of dog care again either. Tiffany and I collaborated right away, and that was, starting in that winter of two thousand and fifteen. I then left that daycare, and we joined forces to collaborate and create a private training school for dogs. This school will enrich their needs both physically, emotionally, and spiritually. We were specifically looking for a property that was out of the ordinary. We knew we wanted, and more importantly, we needed, space, privacy, natural surroundings, acreage, and a home, not a warehouse-style for in-home etiquette training needs. After a long search that spanned over a year, resulting in us finally finding twenty-seven oh five Green Spring Valley Road. This property is zoned RC two, which allows for a commercial kennel with a special exemption permit. Being that this was properly zoned for what we needed, and this property had everything we'd been searching for for over a year, we knew we had finally found the home of Follow My Lead. We followed all the rules, and we applied for the permitting, attended the permit hearing, and we were granted the relief to operate our small private school for dogs. Our property is unlike any other that you will find in Maryland. We are off the beaten path, driving by, you don't even know that we're there, let alone we're working dogs. The acre that we have fenced in allows for ten, not eighteen, dogs to move freely, quietly, and in a healthy manner. They are not subject to being forced to play in groups with dogs and an energy that does not suit them. The beautiful mature trees provide shade on sunny days, freeing us from having to build structures and put up tents to shield them from the sun. Our dogs are taking in fresh air, which eliminates the spread of illness and disease. They are exempt from stress due to being full... Can I keep going?
If you could just conclude your remarks.
Okay, sure. So, we are a private facility, this is members-only, the public is not coming and going, all dogs have to be enrolled in this program, and they are not, this is not open to all dogs. No signage, we're keeping the, we're preserving the natural state of this home.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Patoka?
Thank you for your testimony. Do you live on the site?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Do you live in Baltimore County?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Katz?
Obviously, there's some of your neighbors upset about this. Have you met with the people who are opposed to what you're doing? And have they come up with any solutions to the issue? For instance, I know that there is material that can be put on a fence that will reduce the noise. What, just briefly, what solutions did they come up with, and how close were you to resolving your differences?
Well, as far as solutions, they, they didn't offer solutions in that, but I will actually defer all that, the next speaker is going to explain all, we don't have the barking issues, but she will further explain that and how that's possible.
Thank you. Alright, well, our next speaker, Tiffany Sterns, followed by Jonathan Kaufman.
Mr. Chairman, Council, thank you very much for opening this up today, this platform. Without going into too much detail in my training, because it would take way more than three minutes, I will hit the highlights as quickly as I can. I have been training dogs for over thirty years. I am a self-taught trainer, I worked with abused, neglected, and surrendered animals. I moved to Baltimore in two thousand and fourteen and began training my personal dog, decided to take him to a facility that Mary Frances owned. Coming from the country and moving into Baltimore was a huge awakening to realize the deficits in how we warehouse, train, care for our canines. I believe in critical space, each dog has its own critical space thresholds. I believe that if we can support those, the dog instantly becomes successful, and it reduces illness and fighting and frustration barking. I have a whole platform on how we train the reduction of barking, we can practically eliminate it. I have video after video after video of no barking in group settings. I believe in bonding with these animals through touch and positive reinforcement. Our handlers spend a lot of time loving on these dogs, and it is learning through play, learning through positive reinforcement. I believe that Green Spring Valley is a collaboration of teaching environments from private elementary, secondary, preparatory schools, and universities. I believe that my training enrichment academy, affording canines an area to learn across platform, habituating them to the community, which makes for calm, confident, quiet pups while moving through their day with their owners, and making Green Spring Valley the ideal location with their commitment to education, not to mention that this was a schoolhouse from nineteen thirty till the mid-seventies. The connection to the property and parallel training, I believe in in-home etiquette, I believe dog-on-dog socialization is a priority as we move our dogs through our own communities ourselves. I believe in human-dog socialization and habituating them to strangers. I believe that we need a low visibility with minimal distraction environment, save from cars, people, and wildlife, that's why we have a closed members-only training facility. I believe that if we keep a dog in complete reclusion from its environment, that it elicits negative frustration behaviors, allowing dogs to become more territorial over their space. If we can keep them socialized in a low-stress environment, which also means keeping them outside more so that they can reduce the...
If you could conclude your remarks.
Thank you. In short, I believe that changing these zoning rules, after we have legally, lawfully, and respectfully followed all the laws required within Baltimore County, is unfair. I think it goes against everything that this council stands for and for your statement over the top of your heads. I'm asking that I either be grandfathered into this clause in good faith, that I have put my own self-imposed conditions in an effort to minimize environmental, visual, and audible impact to the neighborhood, as well as Green Spring Valley in general. Thank you.
Councilman Katz?
Are you, are you in operation today?
I am.
Okay, how many dogs are there now?
We run all over, how many dogs are onsite right now? One.
I'm sorry, what?
One, we have one onsite right now.
And what is the highest number that you have there?
So, the highest number, this gets a little muted, and I apologize. We believe in pack walks and hikes, so while I would have a daily population of twenty-five dogs, fifty percent of them, thirty percent of them, excuse me, thirty percent of them, up to eight dogs, would be on hikes. So, twenty-five minus eight, it's seventeen.
I thought you could only have ten.
So, ten dogs will be outside, the conditions that were set forth. I asked for eight overnight guests, and I asked for a percentage of dogs to be in the yard at any one time, which was granted by the administrative law judge.
Now, do you, did you work with the people who have the concerns?
I tried, I did, yeah, I definitely did try. I was, I was resisted, and I had other neighbors that were neutral, and then I had other neighbors that were in support of, that didn't feel that they could step out of the boundary of the rest of the neighborhood.
Did you think that any of the concerns that your opponents have have merit and that you are looking to resolve that particular issue?
I have been trying to resolve, using your words, as much as I can. They, one concern was that I don't live there full-time. The reason why I don't live there full-time, we bought this property as a long-term investment. We bought it to run a business out of. I would, I would love to move up there sooner rather than later, and we also plan on retiring. My husband and I plan on retiring up there as well. So, we plan on owning this home for a lot of years.
What, what would happen if this bill goes into effect? You'd have to put another fifty feet, right? You'd have to move in another fifty feet on both sides? Because it's, it's a hundred now, right? Fifty-fifty is a hundred.
Yes, but I don't know if I'm understanding the...
No, and, and the bill says two hundred. So, that's a hundred extra feet to come in, to, to...
So, I feel like it would be more than that, right? Wouldn't it be two hundred from any, any property line?
Okay, well, then, what, okay, whatever you have to move it in, what would the effect be? In other words, how much open land for the dogs would you lose?
I would essentially lose all of it. So, when we purchased this property, we purchased five extra parcels, which puts us at just under four acres. We were respectful of the flood zone and the forest buffer, we did meet with an environmentalist, but I don't want to pretend like I know any of that. So, where we put the fence afforded us the fifty feet from each property line. If this bill goes into effect, then I don't have enough space east to west.
And you, is it a total of fifty, or is it fifty on one side and fifty on the other?
Correct, fifty on one side and fifty, it's fifty from every property line.
So, it's a hundred, so it's a hundred feet to that?
Yes, sir.
So, if this goes into effect, it would be a hundred more?
Yes, sir.
And, and what you're saying is that east-west, it would eliminate?
Yes, it would.
Councilman Jones?
Ms. Sterns, thank you so much for coming in. I guess what, I'm going to assume what my colleague was trying to get at was if this bill is enacted in its presence form, would it put you out of business?
Yes, sir.
How much money have you spent to date to get to where you are right now, and it relates to this location?
We have put in the initial price of the property, which we paid well above and beyond what the rest of the neighborhood would be appraised at. We, we put in over sixty thousand dollars for maintenance and repairs and... We, we put in over sixty thousand dollars for maintenance and repairs and cosmetic offense, and then, not to mention all the legal and the professional fees that we also incurred prior to even seeing if this was a feasible plan.
Give me a number.
Oh.
The property, your property costs, your legal fees?
So, by the time we purchased the property, I'm gonna, a safe, a safe guess would be over eight-hundred thousand dollars to purchase this property. We put in another sixty thousand in, in repairs and fixes, and then my legal fees, all the not, thank you, thank you, thank you. I honestly don't know the answer to that question, but I'm well over a million dollars. And to this, I think at this point, I have a huge investment in this, and I absolutely love this property.
Councilwoman Marks.
This was Judge Beverden, correct?
Yes, sir.
The administrative law judge. So, what was the package of conditions that were part of the order?
Do you mind if I flip to that? I don't want to misspeak today.
Sure, or if you could just summarize some.
And I'm definitely a little stressed.
No, I understand, I understand.
We do have Adam, Adam's going to speak as well.
Okay, Adam, do you, yeah.
So, you can address that, or we got Adam Rosenblatt later?
Adam can do it, I can.
Okay.
So, what's every way you want to do it?
I'm gonna do it to the best that I can. I self-imposed my conditions. We were already almost thirty feet off of any property line. We did not want to come right up onto homes. The, the nearest home is, within fifty feet, is, is one. I have one. And that, that tenant is a client of mine. We have a great relationship. I adore her. Anyways, so, we self-imposed our own property lines, urban and planning, asked us to, to please bring it in to a total of fifty feet on each side, which we accommodated. They asked, they self-imposed my recommendation of eight overnighters that was put into it. They also, he also instituted no more than ten dogs within the enclosed area, which was my recommendation. And I also self-imposed that this property would never be sold as a kennel, and that permitting would expire prior to any sale.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions. I, I keep hearing that you've had some conflict with the neighbors, and you've tried to come to a resolution, but I haven't heard what they were. Can you just say one or two of what the neighbors are in conflict? You know why they don't want you there?
I can. I think, I think they're worried about the schoolhouse in general. I think they're worried...
Not the dogs?
So, I haven't heard that.
It's not about the dogs?
I, they're worried about traffic. So, we, and we do have a school bus. It's a little shuttle bus that we are looking to purchase. I don't want people coming in and off the property either. It creates distractions in our training platform, so we would be using a, it's like a fourteen-passenger shuttle bus. You don't need a special license for it at all.
Oh, so you'll pick the dogs up and, and bring them?
Yes, ma'am, yep.
Cuddle shuttle, that's cute.
Yes. Another concern is waste. We put a, we use a relief pen. So, if you, if you were to look at the property, there's, there's three enclosures. The first one is a relief pen, which I, I was strategically enough, I did put it up, I put it south, which is south of the Jones Falls. The dogs are taken into that relief pen where they use the restroom. Any feces is picked up at the moment that it happens, because we believe that the, if any doctors are here, but the, the window to health is through bowel movement, so we note all of them. So, nothing has remained. We don't have timed pickups, nothing like that. And then I did find, and I'm still trying to research and make sure we're in the right vicinity, but I'm, I found an enzymatic, all-natural, organic neutralizer that could go into the relief pen, and then they're brought into the main enclosure.
So, it's not dogs are barking all day?
No.
That's not an issue?
No.
That's all I got.
Other, Councilwoman Petoka.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Sterns.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you live in Baltimore County?
I do not currently live in Baltimore County.
So, this is not your principal residence?
Not yet.
Okay, and you plan to move there?
I do.
You're starting a business there, and you also plan to retire there. To me, those, I, I'm having a difficult time reconciling that, because starting a business and retiring seem to me to be on different ends of the spectrum. What you're, what you're...
I suppose they, I suppose they're on the other end if I was twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. I certainly appreciate that. The other thing, is I was under the impression that, that you could operate up to three dogs, and would, and that would not be a commercial kennel. That would be a private kennel. Is that correct understanding?
I'm not sure what that...
I believe so, yes.
Anybody can have three dogs.
So, that, I think the question came up as to, I forget what, that might have been you, Councilwoman Katz, asked how many dogs, if this legislation didn't pass, that Ms. Sterns would still be able to have three dogs on-site.
Well, agree to disagree, because she should be allowed to have the dogs, if the law says she can have...
Again, Councilwoman Bevins, my interest is, I stand to serve to the best interests of the residents of the second district.
But I thought that your residents had a problem, like with barking dogs, or it, I don't know what the issue is yet. No one's told me what the issue is.
You know, we're gonna have lots of public speakers that I'm sure you're gonna hear from.
Yeah, I need to hear what the issue is.
Just a quick comment for Councilwoman Petoka, and I understand perfectly about
trying to protect the best interests of the constituents in your district, but this bill has county-wide implications. This is a county-wide bill. This isn't picking out one property and doing a, what do we call those?
Redheaded Eskimos.
Redheaded Eskimos. So, there are implications, and perhaps even unintended consequences, for other businesses of this type that may be affected in one of our districts that are already operating. The retroactive clause, the retroactive amendment is back to January one, 2019.
Councilwoman Katz, do you have something?
Is there somebody at the schoolhouse twenty-four hours a day? I mean, is it, do you have somebody staying there?
Yes.
Okay.
It's usually me. I think we split it between Mary Frances and I.
But someone's there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Question for you is, so I understand if you look at how many properties are affected within this fifty feet of the property line, the answer would be one, and it's a friendly person, it's a ten, it's a client of yours. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just so I understand, say, we take that from fifty feet to a hundred feet of your property line, how many properties would you guess are affected?
Boy, I am really bad at that. I'm really bad at that. I, I know fifty feet, because I watch the fence.
Right. I wouldn't mind, like, Adam Rosenblatt or somebody, just so I understand in my brain, like, you take the property line, you go fifty feet. How many homes are we talking about? You go a hundred feet, you go two-hundred feet. I would just like to know that, just so I can get a better kind of visual in my brain on...
Yes, absolutely.
Like, what we're talking about, because at some point, if a property is two miles down the road, well, they're clearly way past, you know, even five-hundred feet. And so, like, I'm really trying to understand the, the impact and where the real, the real pain point is. Is it a perception of dogs barking and interrupting, say, the environment? Or is, is it a reality? I mean, and, and that's something I think we're all trying to really understand better as well.
Yes, sir. I, I would agree with that. I did, I don't know if this affords anything or not, but when we, when we did look at the property, the fencing is pushed to the north, away from, if you wanted to call it, populated areas. So, we, we certainly didn't try to build a fence right in top of someone's backyard, so to speak.
Right. All right, any other questions for Mrs. Sterns from the council? Is everybody? Councilman Jones?
I'm, I'm guess, curious. Can you explain to us why you are so sure that these dogs would not be disruptive to the community in terms of barking?
Because I have thirty years of training. I have figured out what causes barking. There are three major causes of barking, and if I can train to them proactively, and we put the dogs in an environment where there is no stress, and stress comes from lack of critical space. Think of your commercial, your traditional commercial kennels, where they're on, they're in chain-link fences, and they have limited movement, and they have a tendency to start pacing. You get the zoo effect, right? That pacing back and forth and back and forth. If we open up the environment and allow the dog free movement, it naturally takes down the barking. The other thing that happens is we have a lot of attention barking. So, traditionally, you can have unattended dogs. Even, we even do it in our residential, in our own homes. We put the dog outside, and the dog's barking and going crazy, and mostly, it probably wants to come back into where we are. So, just by handlers standing out there and interacting and engaging and training through play, we eliminate the need for barking. I have a really cool footage the other day. I think we had six dogs out in the enclosure, and five deer came right across the south side of the property and stopped at the, right at the, at the creek, and they were drinking out of the creek, tromping through it. And I had three dogs take notice of it, which was awesome. We took it as a training opportunity. Not a single one barked, and I, I wish there was a TV in here. I wish I could show you video after video after video of these dogs interacting in an environment without stress, which results in no barking.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Everybody good? All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sterns.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Kaufman, followed by Janice Silvers.
Hi, my name is Dr. Jonathan Kaufman. I'm a veterinarian. Thank you, council and chairman. I'm here with a little different twist as a professional who is a Baltimore County resident for a long time, and as a veterinarian and as a client. So, I've met Tiffany now several years ago with, believe it or not, my own problem children, my, my current dogs, and found her approach to be very different, and one that I even took as far as utilizing in a daycare that we are just about to open in my, my veterinary hospital on Monday, and she helped us design that. And the approach is that the barking dog has got some issues, and Tiffany's entire approach and her team solved those problems for my clients. She has, I've referred her to a dozen or more clients at, at our hospital, incredible results. And so, what I just want to make sure is that the current reality in, in this facility is, is not compared to the idea of a kennel, which I'm also very familiar with. These are special people who want to go the extra step in making their dogs good citizens, making them ideal pets and family members at home, and therefore, to make this a generalization that it's a kennel would, would be uninformed, because it's a very different kind of place. And that's really all I wanted to, to point out. I'm a resident in the Greenspring Valley area. Again, our dogs go there. One of them did not pass, and they have to be accepted, and I think that's important, too, that it, there's a high standard, and the results are what every neighbor would want and what every owner would want, which is a balanced, happy pet. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilwoman Petoka.
Thank you, Dr. Kaufman, for your testimony. So, you live in Greenspring Valley. Can I ask what street, or?
Waterspout Court.
So, on Waterspout Court, would you be comfortable if a commercial enterprise started operation next door to you on Waterspout Court?
It's a general statement, so a commercial enterprise, I'm, I'm into specifics. I, it would be difficult. I, I see where you're going, and probably the answer is no, but...
Well, if I could help specifically, if this kennel was your neighbor fif, within fifty feet?
I would be happy.
Okay.
I, I would take my own pets there.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Our next speaker, Janice Silvers, followed by Steve Rosen.
My name is Janice Silvers, actually Beckman, and my husband was supposed to be here today, but he wasn't able to come. I'm a resident of Caves Valley. I live on Caveswood Lane. I actually do have a commercial business in back of me, which is Caves Farm, with horses and dogs and all kinds of animals going back and forth, and very close to my backyard, and it's not a problem for me. I was, Follow My Lead was recommended to me by my vet. I have, I rescued a dog who has aggression problems with other dogs, and truthfully, without Tiffany and Mary Frances, I don't know what I would have done. He, I have been in class with her and Mary Frances. There were six dogs in the class. Tiffany takes the dog from me, because sometimes I'm nervous with him, and that dog, it's unbelievable. You would not believe how this dog has changed. I don't know if I would have been able to keep him if it wasn't for the two of them. Follow My Lead performs a great needed service for the community and people living in Caves Valley. Tiffany and Mary Frances are unbelievably responsive, responsible people. I can't imagine them causing any, allowing any undue noise or commotion going on with their dogs. I feel it would be a travesty to change the original setbacks without grandfathering them in, especially with the financial burden it would cause for them. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, our next speaker, Steve Rosen, followed by B. Melvin Cole. Is Steve here?
I'm taking this one.
Okay. All right, good afternoon, Ms. Rosen.
Good afternoon, everyone. I had a few pages of notes that I wanted to talk about, but Councilwoman Bevins pretty much stated my primary concerns, and she did it much better than I would have done, so thank you for that. But let me just go over a couple of points as a citizen of Baltimore County and off Greenspring Avenue, that I don't like the fact that the county is pulling the rug out from an established business that followed all the rules, planned and paid a lot of money to put into this operation, went through the ALJ process, got a special exception, and is now being told, pretty much with a retroactive bill or an attempt at a retroactive bill, that's trying to, it's, it's aimed at one, one business, and I don't think that's fair. I'm not a constitutional scholar. I don't know if it's constitutional, but it's not fair. Let's see. From the neighbor's point of view, because I'm sure that's important, it would have been important to me, there is no barking. If there is a barking dog, I've been there a number of times, my dog goes there, and Mary Frances and Tiffany have done an amazing job. I go there, you don't hear barking, you don't smell anything, there's no waste, the waste is picked up. They are so responsive and attentive to these dogs. They learn inside, for the most part, and then go outside, so they get an experience of a real home, being in a real home. And most of the homes are farther away than my neighbors would be. I can tell you also personally, my dog rarely barks. Before we got to this kennel, he would bark, let's say I'm preparing his meal in excitement. Now, I don't know what they've done, but he sits there like a gentleman and just waits patiently, and it's nothing that I've done, so I can only imagine they've done it, and they've done it for all the dogs there. I know the Valley Planning Council is probably at the heart of many of the concerns, and I respect the organization, but I think they're going overboard. I don't think that I've heard anything from any of the actual neighbors on this block that has about six houses, and the organization is at the end of this block, and it just seems like in their quest to be on top of everything new that happens in the valley, they're going overboard. And I just, I think that's pretty much it. They also, I know they've tried to intimidate her, intimidate the business going on to their property, saying things, doing things, and you're never going to get this approved, you're never going to be able to do this, and I find it offensive as, as a resident, as a, as a citizen. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rosen. Our next speaker, B. Melvin Cole, followed by John Hildenberg.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak in support of Bill seven-nine-teen. That will require a two-hundred-foot setback for any kennel in Baltimore County. As I said, my name is Bernard Melvin Cole, Jr., and I've been a lifelong resident of Baltimore County. I currently... I currently live at 2707 Greenspring Valley Road. The property next to mine is the one that we've been discussing. The one thing that I want to make sure everybody understands, especially for those that might not be aware of the valley, is this property sits up high. So noise, noise flows there. So I totally understand your questioning around how many houses are within 100, 200 or so feet. But, you know, I want to first talk about my, some of my concerns. You asked, you know, what are my concerns? You know, it's definitely, it's noise, it's traffic, and it's that the fact that there's going to be a commercial property right next to my house, where I've lived for 10 years. Those are my concerns. You know, I can say a 24-hour kennel will allow dogs not only to be kept and trained during daylight hours during the week, but also over the weekend, which is when we, my family, spend much of our time outside. In addition, this kennel will house dogs overnight. That will impact the quiet time that we enjoy now, the deer coming through the yard, the fox, everything. We spend a great deal of time right now outside. I play with my son. We share a driveway with this commercial business now. We play basketball in our driveway. We play football. My son sleeps out in tents in the yard. So a kennel so close to our property line and the additional traffic will impact our ability to enjoy the peaceful settings that we highly praise and which was a major reason why we purchased our home 10 years ago. So I ask you guys tonight, when you go home, to imagine that commercial kennel that is right off your property line. Imagine the impact that it will have on your family and the way it would impact your ability to enjoy your time at home. I'm concerned also that if the kennel in our neighborhood is allowed to operate, it's going to continue to be an area of conflict in our neighborhood. And that is, you know, definitely detrimental to our close-knit community that we have today. I can say, you know, we need your help. So please help us in protect residential neighborhoods throughout Baltimore County, having commercial kennels open so close to residential neighborhoods. I do want to say, John, who's our next speaker, used to live in this property. He had three dogs. One of his dogs was a puppy. I knew Dickens would, Dickens was a black lab who's still with John. He would, he would hear me pull in our driveway and open my door. So that's how fast or how well travel, sound travels in this neighborhood, especially at night. So A, I am very concerned about noise. Traffic has definitely picked up in my driveway that we share today. So those are my concerns.
Mr. Cole, question for you is, how many feet from the property line is your, I see you're in Greenspring Valley, so you may be fairly close. How many feet away would you say your property is from their property line?
My property line runs right along their property line.
How many feet would you say? How many feet from there? Okay, so you're right next to it. So you're bordering the property itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Katz?
The business is open, from what we've been told, and
Business is?
You're, you've seen more cars or more vehicles in the shared driveway at night. Do you have problems with barking dogs, with the noise? Or the day? Do you have problems with barking dogs since it's in full operation? I'd just like to know if your fears have been realized.
As you say, I don't know if, we say it's in full operation. Tiffany mentioned, you know, they have one dog on the premise right now. You know, I've heard dogs bark in the, in, you know, playing up there, they're playing catch, things like that. That's okay. I understand. I love dogs. We love dogs. But my concern is when they have up to 10 dogs outside, eight dogs inside, transitioning them at night and day, that is going to be disruptive to our community.
Is it disruptive now?
For the one dog? No. I've, that's, I've seen there, out in the yard at this point.
I think she said she had more. Am I wrong? You have more than one dog?
Yes, ma'am. I have one currently.
Just for today?
Yes.
That's what I thought I understood. They're, they're operating.
Do you have eight, do you board eight dogs?
So we just, we just opened, so we have, had eight overnighters.
All right. Okay, let's, can we go back? Councilman Petoka?
I guess it's safe to assume that, from what I've heard from Ms. Sterns and from you, that it's not in full operation, whether it's one, two, or three dogs. And I think we said earlier that three dogs was considered a private kennel.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Cole? Councilman Jones?
I guess I had one quick question. Your neighbor had three dogs prior to when he was living there.
Yes, sir.
And I have three dogs.
Yes, sir.
So I'm just curious if Ms. Stern is telling the truth, which is that she trains the dogs so they do not bark, would you still have an issue?
Yes. Because once again, that's one of my concerns, noise, traffic, having a commercial property. And if she can find a way to keep dogs from barking, I've never seen it. So that's what is my concern. And I have heard, I mean, when the dog, when they're out there playing catch with the ball, the dog gets excited, it barks. I understand that. It's not when they have one dog, it's when they have 10 or 18 on the property at one time, is that's my concern. And if I may, one of the questions that you were asking earlier about have we worked with them to try to come up with solutions? The challenge we've had is the amount of information that we've been getting on this property was in drips and drabs. Initially, when we talked to them, it was about training dogs in the house. And then later we heard, oh, we're going to build a kennel with potentially 20 dogs outside. Now, that was changed in the zoning requirements back to 10. So, you know, I can't, I'm really surprised that Tiffany had mentioned that, you know, she hadn't heard any concerns about noise and traffic. Because one of the reasons why they're coming through my driveway right now is our neighbors up on Spring Hill, which they have two accesses to this property, complained about traffic being picked up on that road. So she allowed them, or she said, to appease them, she started using the Greenspring Valley, which is my shared driveway. So there have been discussions, and that's why I'm really surprised to hear that there have not been any conversations around our concerns.
Councilman Jones?
One more, because I guess want to get this part out. So you and your son play basketball?
Yes, sir.
So I know for a fact that I've had cases in Newtown where people have complained because the neighbor's kids are playing basketball in their driveway.
Yes, sir.
And they don't like the bouncing ball, and he works at night, and he don't think the kids should have to play basketball.
Yep.
Do, if somebody were to complain because of you and your kid were playing basketball and they didn't like the ball bouncing, do you think you would have a right to play basketball on your property?
Yeah, it's a very good question. As a matter of fact, Beau, who was my neighbor across the street that sits up high on the other side of the valley, I asked him today, before I was sat in the hall, are we bothering you playing basketball outside in our yard? And his response was, you know what, it's great to hear kids play. When his kids were younger, I used to hear them out playing, practicing field hockey and lacrosse. That's, that's the thing of beauty, having kids out there playing, learning sports. So yes, I would certainly, if a neighbor came to me with any concern, I'd try to address it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilman Petoka?
Mr. Cole, just want to congratulate you on being out on the court with your kid. It's a great way to stay in shape.
I still beat him, but not for long.
All right. Wait until he learns to first step you. It's all over at that point.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Cole. Our next speaker, John Hildenberg, followed by Nayler Finity.
I live in Baltimore County. I, my wife and I were the previous owners of this property that we call the Schoolhouse. I'm going to try not to duplicate what's been said or what will probably be said, and I'm willing to stipulate that Tiffany Sterns is a good dog trainer. So that's not part of my argument. We did hear today that this business was applied for lawfully, legally, and respectfully. Wiser legal heads than mine would speak to lawfully and legally, but as to respectfully, we were not told what the plans were for this property. None of the neighbors were told. No disclosures were made to us or to the neighborhood. There, I heard that there was one sign put up, one notice, driving back and forth constantly. I never saw it. So if, if you want to look at it from our point of view, this business was brought into our neighborhood by stealth. And we don't see that as being respectful or as ethical. And that's behind some of the opposition that you're hearing today. On a more technical note, I hope that somebody is looking at the sanitary aspects of this. From the Schoolhouse itself down to the Class A trout stream, which are the headquarters of the Jones Falls, there's a lawn, a long lawn. At the foot of that lawn, any soil from the dogs would compromise that stream. You go a little further up, and there are two septic fields, which need to be avoided. Beyond that, not very far, there is the well that serves the house with its drinking water. And further up beyond that, there is a second well, which is the emergency water supply. So I would urge whoever's responsible to take a look at not just setbacks from the property line, but any setbacks necessary to preserve the integrity of the water system and the sewer disposal system. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments? All right.
Just one comment. Thank you for your testimony. When I campaigned, I campaigned and said I would support development that was respectful to the community and respectful to the environment. And so thank you for your comments, because I'm going to stick by my campaign promise.
All right. Our next speaker is Nayler Finity, followed by Cassandra Nayler. I guess coincidence. That was a coincidence. I know. Good afternoon.
I'm just here on behalf of my father, who couldn't make it. I have a statement prepared by him. Dear county council members, the Greater Greenspring Association and its members are in support of Bill 719. This bill is the result of a commercial kennel in an RC2 zone applying for special exception. It is apparent that there is a mistake or omission in the law and that there are no setbacks required for commercial kennels. Bill 719 is not intended to stop one kennel. The bill is introduced by Councilman Petoka to correct the current law, which is not clear. The 200-foot setback, which was never stated for commercial kennels, or the 200-foot setback was never stated for commercial kennels, and this was an oversight. I believe everyone here can agree that if a dog kennel was to go next to your property, the 200-foot setback would be a minimum requirement as it is currently stated for private kennels. The Greater Greenspring Association thanks Councilman Petoka for introducing this bill and hopes the rest of the council will support him in righting this wrong so that all kennels, private and commercial, will have to meet the minimum of a 200-foot setback in Baltimore County. Additionally, while this bill is intended to rectify the law, in this particular instance, setbacks and regulations are needed to protect the historic and important African-American landmark, as well as the important waterways and residential areas surrounding the kennel. Sincerely, Thomas Finity, President of the Greater Greenspring Association.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Cassandra Nayler, followed by Beverly Compton. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. I support Bill 719 that establishes a 200-foot setback for all kennels. As a neighbor of the residential property of 2705 Greenspring Valley Road, I oppose Tiffany Sterns and Russell Carter's approval for special exception to RC2 zoning to operate a commercial kennel, Follow My Lead. The African-American village of Shattalani, begun in 1867, is still enduring today. Some of the residents have lived here for generations. It is a community of diverse friends, socializing and taking care of each other. There is trust, peace, and quiet in this rural setting, with a lane, Spring Hill Road, connecting all the homes. The historic Schoolhouse property, 2705 Greenspring Valley Road, was to be sold as a residential home to Tiffany Sterns and Russell Carter, who under deceptive guise professed the Schoolhouse to be a future home for their family overflow. Follow My Lead seems to be a fine program, but to destroy this historic Schoolhouse and property to run the commercial kennel will have such a negative impact on Shattalani Village that there will surely be the beginning of its demise. There are many appropriate places to establish a dog kennel, but not in Shattalani Village. Small rural communities are having problems existing despite there being such an essential and valuable bedrock of Baltimore County. RC2 zoning is a regulation to protect such important communities. Please, no commercial dog kennels. Let's save Shattalani Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Beverly Compton, followed by Jay Newson.
My name's Bev Compton, and I am a Baltimore County resident. I am not a neighbor, nor am I a resident of the Greenspring Valley. My presence here is appropriate because I'm the guy that bought the Schoolhouse from the county, developed it, made it into a three-bedroom house. And what I'm going to tell you is that I'm also a 50-year member of Trout Unlimited. Jones Falls headwaters runs through that property and is a registered trout stream, a registered Class A trout stream. It's protected. Now, I was over at the property the other day. I noticed that the kennels have been built exactly on top of the septic fields. So it makes me doubt the owner's claims of caring about the environment, because with the, with the, with the kennels on top of the septic field, it won't fail this year, but it will fail sometime, much sooner than it would normally have failed. None of that land in that whole area perks. So we need to pay attention to the land, and we need to pay attention to the property. We need to pay attention in particular to the preservation of the Jones Falls River stream. It's valuable. And there are trout there today. I saw them three days ago. Thank you.
So can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman?
So I have a question. Is this the Schoolhouse historically landmarked? Is this a schoolhouse historically landmarked? It's not? Okay.
I had it registered as a historic landmark. Whether it still is or not, I don't know.
Well, it's on, it said somewhere that it's on the MHT list, and there's no regulatory aspect to that.
Oh, okay. All right. And I guess, second, I saw the...
I'm sorry, but not on the Baltimore County list?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Has it been applied for?
I believe that there is a nomination.
Okay.
It came in fairly recently.
Oh, it just came recently?
All I can tell you is that I got my tax deduction as a rental progress.
But the MHT stuff is that we are not allowed to use MHT for regulating anything. They've been telling us that for years.
Right. And I saw the owner shaking their head about where that is built. You're disagreeing with what he just testified to. We don't have kennels? He does, they don't have kennels?
I'm sorry.
They don't have kennels on the property?
There's a fence exactly on top of the septic field. I can't hear.
She was just explaining that it's just a fence. There's no kennels built on top of that property.
Things go inside the fence. When you build a septic field, you need grass and you need air to make the septic field work. That won't happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Compton.
Why wouldn't it happen?
All right. Our next speaker is Jay Newson here. Good to see you. And then Theresa Moore, followed by Jay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, councilmen and women. My name is Jay Newson. I'm a registered Maryland voter and a resident of Baltimore County District 2, and a homeowner at 2714 Spring Hill Road, a property approximately 50 yards, 50 feet from the property of the proposed dog kennel in the historic Chatalani District, which represents, the kennel would represent a reintroduction of commercial activity in our neighborhood. I've lived in the neighborhood since 1997, or approximately 22 years. The neighbors have collectively eliminated from the community commercial activity. There was Burnham Oil there, there was a landscaping business, there were private schools, and now a dog kennel, in or to cultivate, establish, preserve, or reinforce the residential profile and quality of life in our neighborhood. I ask that you support Bill 719 because it not only recognizes the community will secure measures to sustain our peaceful enjoyment of our residents, but acknowledges the long overdue housekeeping with regard to the restriction for kennels of all types in RC2 zones, particularly with high population and residential densities such as my neighborhood. The proposed 200-foot setback, retroactive to January 2019, is absolutely necessary to my neighbors and myself's right to a peaceful enjoyment of our neighborhood. I want to mention that there have been 40-plus declarations of opposition signed by the community and submitted into evidence to the Baltimore County Public Hearing on this kennel. These from residents who actually reside in the varying proximities to the proposed kennel. There are more than one residences adjacent to that. There are five or six. The dog kennel supports are not residents of close proximity. They are clients and staff of Tiffany Sterns, who not only advance their own interests by supporting the kennel, but are completely buffered from the impact of their peaceful enjoyment on their properties because they live distant to the kennel. I doubt if any one of the honorable councilmen and women would relish residing next door at their abounds to a dog kennel, buy a residence next to one, or in the worst circumstance, try to find a buyer for your primary residence for whom living next to a kennel would be considered an asset. Bill 719 creates the critical minimum setback of 200 feet, retroactive to January 1, needed for these zones. A retroactive date is a reasonable component of the bill, given the dog kennel issue has avoided comprehensive attention since 2000. Please support Bill 719 and invest it with the power, will, and protection for the people who live, in many instances, for generations in this valley.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Councilman.
Did the community appeal the decision of the ALJ to the Board of Appeals?
We are in the process of preparing to submit our appeal, yes.
Okay.
And I would like to mention, if I may, that I understand the documents from the ALJ cautioned Tiffany from building a fence, because if the appeal was upheld, that they would have to remove those materials. But she went ahead to do that, investing in that, I presume, in the hopes that, you know, possession is nine-tenths of the law, isn't it?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
So, I just want to, I hate to keep interacting like this, but I heard three people say they are opposed to this proposed legis, this is already done, okay? They already received this.
I understand that.
So, it's not for discussion right now. What's for discussion is really the amendment that Councilman Petoka has put in. And I have to tell you, I'm not trying to be sarcastic here, but I live on the Gunpowder River, right on the river. We want to address noise. Every house is on a 50-foot lot, not an acre, not a half acre. We all have dogs, so I probably hear more noise than what you guys hear. So, I'm just saying, I know what it's like to hear other people's noise, but when you have neighbors, that happens. I guess I'm trying to figure out, it seems like we're going through this process, like we would initially go through the process of the special exception, and that's not what this council is supposed to be doing. If all these people would have showed up for the special exception, then maybe it wouldn't have happened.
With respect, Councilwoman Bevins, I mentioned the declarations with the public hearing just to demonstrate that there is neighborhood opposition.
Okay.
On record.
Okay.
And anybody else?
I still can't hear.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jay. Our next speaker, Theresa Moore. Where's Theresa? Is Theresa here? Oh, there. I'm sorry. Okay. Michael? Okay. Michael's going to be speaking for Theresa, I guess, Valley Planning Council, I think. And then Catherine Washburn, followed by that. Catherine? Is Catherine here? Yeah. All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name again is Michael McCann, and I represent the Valley's Planning Council in the case that we've been talking about. I wanted to address really just one issue, and briefly, and that is Ms. Bevins' point, which, about providing certainty to property owners, this property owner in particular, and her statement that the law is the law. An extremely important point, obviously, but having practiced in this area for quite a while, I can tell you it's a point that is, it is often, often misunderstood. The law, what the law tells us, Ms. Bevins and members of the council, is that until this property owner or any property owner obtains a final special exception, which this property owner has not done, the property owner has no rights, no vested rights, to use the property in that fashion. I think Mr. Cott asked the question whether we are appealing. We are appealing. We're appealing this week. So, sitting here today, and I think the council knows that appeals for the Board of Appeals are de novo, meaning it's a brand-new case. So, sitting here today, upon filing of that appeal, they have no special exception rights to do what they want to do, no vested rights under the law. And I would just caution the council, if I may, about relying upon that as a basis to reject this bill. It's an important issue, Ms. Bevins, as I said. I just think it's one that not everybody entirely grasps. The other thing I would add is, as someone who represents community associations, not developers, I, for 20-plus years, I can't tell you how many times I am on the other side of things. That is, a bill was passed that accommodates a specific development. There is a reason why Baltimore County zoning regulations are this thick, thicker than any other zoning regulations in this state, as far as I know. The other thing that happens on a fairly regular basis is a bill is passed after my clients have received that rare victory before the ALJ or before the Board of Appeals. And that new law applies despite a victory that we may have obtained. So, those are my points. I just wanted to ask the board, take that into consideration, and try not to look at that aspect of it. Obviously, these folks have spent a lot of money to obtain the special exception. They haven't obtained it yet, and as their attorney should have told him, and we all know who represents them in this case, and I'm sure they did tell them, that unless you obtain a special exception, unless you, a valid final special exception, you don't have vested rights. So, we should be careful about issues of certainty and the law being the law. I would just ask the board, the council rather, to look at this law theoretically, and is this a good bill or is it not? And I think for the reason Mr. Petoka said, it is a good bill. It makes no sense in my mind that there is a setback for private kennels in residential areas, but not commercial kennels in residential areas.
Mr. McCann, question if I could, is, given the fact that this may be going to the Board of Appeals, as an attorney, I mean, is it prudent for the legislative branch to be maybe interfering with the judicial branch?
Well, I would submit that this bill was not about this case necessarily. A lot of people are talking about it.
I would strongly disagree with that. I mean, this is all about one business. Let's be clear on this. If anybody thinks this is not about one business, I think that's absolutely overexact, I mean, just completely, the statement.
Right. And it's not about dogs.
Like, this is about one business. Come on, Mr. McCann.
It'll affect this business. I don't agree.
Yes, it's all about one business.
It'll affect lots of areas in northern Baltimore County where folks...
But one issue...
The entire county, not just northern Baltimore County.
Correct.
All the county.
One issue I have going on right now is, you know, we have separation of powers for a reason. We have an executive branch, we have a judicial branch, we have a legislative branch. We have separations of powers for a reason. This went through an administrative law judge decision. Now, it might be going through a Board of Appeals, and to me, if the legislative branch steps in in the middle of all this, to me, that almost seems improper.
Well, we're not in the middle of it. We're just starting it. No rights are vested again, and frankly, it happens. This council often intercedes in development issues on, frankly, more so on behalf of the developers than for the community. So, it happens all the time, Chairman. It really does.
Any other questions?
I would like to make a comment. I have right here in the order, I don't need a response from you, but right here in the order, it says petitioners may apply, that would be the owners, may apply for necessary permits and/or licenses upon receipt of this order. They have the order. However, petitioners are hereby made aware that proceeding at this time is at their own risk until 30 days from the date thereof, during which time an appeal can be filed by any party. If for whatever reason this order is reversed, petitioners would be required to return the subject property to its original condition. So, I think that's quite the opposite of what you just said, sir.
I think it's entirely consistent, Ms. Bevins. They proceed at their own risks.
They are. But they can. You're saying they're not allowed to, that they shouldn't be doing this.
No, I believe they're entirely free to proceed at their own risk.
And that's what they're doing.
But it is at their own risk.
Right. And I think they understand that.
Yeah, subject to changes in the law, is my point.
Thank you.
I'm going to, Mr. Chair, I'm going to agree with you, Chairman Quirk, that this has all the appearance of a circumvention of the judicial branch of government. And we are counseled by our own legal counsel to let the administrative branch, the judicial branch, and even the quasi-judicial branch do their jobs, and not to involve ourselves. In fact, that very activity is mentioned in the county code.
If this was not about one particular business, this would be proscriptive, not retroactive, plain and simple to me.
I think what I meant to say, Mr. Chairman, is not only about this one case. Obviously, I agree with you completely that it's, well, my client, Valley's Planning Council in particular, is concerned about dog kennels throughout its geographical area. So, I think that's a fair statement to say that. If this were in another part of the county, which it may be someday, they would be concerned about it, is my point.
I think the gentleman that sold the property wasn't too worried about how it was going to be used, or he would have had it rezoned.
It sounded like he got his price. Councilman Petoka?
Mr. Chair, so I'm only in my fourth month on the council, and so, I'm still new, but I'd like to know, has the council never taken an action based on a development that was occurring somewhere in Baltimore County?
I don't know. Tom?
I don't know. Well, I'm not exactly sure how to approach that question, but to Mr. McCann's point, the council passes bills on a myriad of things, including land use and development and passing bills regarding the zoning regulations. It passes bills when community groups and constituents ask for a bill to be passed for some reason. I believe Mrs. Bevins passed a bill on air cannons for the benefit of communities that had come to her. The council always also receives bill ideas from developers because of some, perhaps a gap in the law, or sometimes because they have an idea of wanting to do a certain thing, and the use may not be enumerated, and they ask the council to do that. So, I understand Mr. McCann's point, but it's not, to my knowledge, the council is not asked to circumvent what the judicial branch has already done to undo it. The council is asked to make laws to allow certain uses in certain zones, or, as I said, when the community also comes and asks for a bill because of a gap or a problem there in county. So, and I think that's it.
Councilman Marks?
Thank you. I've stayed largely quiet because I truly am sympathetic to the need to preserve the rural beauty of this part of the county. I think Valley's Planning Council has done a wonderful job of protecting that. Certainly, the council members who represent the Greenspring Valley have been strong advocates, but one thing that really I don't like is when someone comes and says, "How would you like to be living next to this?" All of us represent very dense neighborhoods, and we have borne the brunt of a lot of development that could go into rural areas, and it's not just Greenspring Valley. It's Kingsville. I represent Kingsville, it's very similar to the Greenspring Valley. So, I would just caution against saying something like that, because there's reasons we are protecting places like Greenspring Valley and Kingsville, to be fair. And I just hope, I just wish we could find a middle ground. You know, we can sometimes do that on these issues. Maybe there is a middle ground. I don't know. But I just wanted to kind of make that statement.
Anybody else? Everybody good? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker, Catherine Washburn, followed by Beau Jarrett.
Yeah. I'm really frustrated. This is... Please hold a bit longer.
Good afternoon. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, members of the council, for having me. I've been a resident of the neighborhood of the Shatalani Village for my entire life, and I'm getting over there. But Shatalani Village, as you may or may not know, is different from Shatalani Hill. Shatalani Village is an entity, a little island in the middle of RC5, all by itself. Even at my advanced age, I think I could probably walk the perimeter in 20 minutes. It's a tight little community. It was given to freed slaves by the landowners after the Civil War, so they'd have a place of their own. They developed it, they loved it, they made a very tight community, they've been marvelous citizens, and they've made huge contributions in and out of their little community. I'm sure you've heard of some of them, mostly in the field of education. As an old teacher, I'm very appreciative of that. But what disturbs me is that I cannot understand why this lady chose, just zeroed in on this little community. Stevenson Village is about a mile south, I mean, east. It's already commercial. It has houses in and out for her to cuddle her dogs and give them the homey feel. It did not have to come an impact on this very little vulnerable community that had black people who had made their church there, their home there, their life there. And now it's an integrated community, and they're very supportive of each other, and it's a rare thing. It's just, it doesn't really matter so much, from my point of view, my understanding, that it's a kennel, although I think that's one of the worst, that it's commercial. Why? Why zero on that little place to make it commercial? I went to the zoning hearing. I could not fathom why they didn't, the judge did not understand that, and then I was further disturbed when the lady started building all of her stuff before the zoning ordinance had been mentioned, had been cleared, and that she had building without permits, and they were about to say something about the permit, I think that was a Friday, when Monday the zoning ordinance came through granting the variance. So, unfortunately, I'm old, I'm getting cynical, but she... So unfortunately, I'm old, I'm getting cynical, but she must have known before that it was gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Next speaker, Beau Jarrett, followed by Edward Lee.
So I know it's been a long afternoon, so I'll try to be as fast as I can. My wife and I, who's here, and the entire Shatalani Hill Association, just across the street, are totally in favor with Mr. Councilman Patako's bill to restrict 200-foot setbacks for kennels, whether it's residential or commercial. I'm a businessman, I'm all about logic, that's where my compass points me. I cannot fathom how a commercial kennel is granted zero setbacks. And this is, Chairman, I agree with you, this is about this operation. They've found a seam in the law, and they're exploiting it, because there's no setback in commercial. They knew this from the beginning, and they came in in the stealth of night. There's not one person in this room that would like to live beside a commercial kennel, a commercial kennel, not even Ms. Sterns. She, at the end of the day, she packs up and goes into Guilford, puts her feet up and takes a relaxing, you know, tea, or maybe a glass of wine, and gets out of the neighborhood, gets away from the noise. Imagine it. So let's be clear, when I sit there and listen to her supporters, they're all about her dog training. And I gotta tell you, I gotta give her credit. She sounds like a wonderful person, a loving person around dogs, but it's not an appropriate area to have a commercial kennel in a residential area. So when the video, no, I'm a logic businessman, when the video does not match the audio, beware, you're about to buy a big ball of wax. So we first hear she's moving in the neighborhood, and they're moving from the city to the county. And then there's a delay of moving in, there's nobody, she's not moving, then we hear that she's moving, well, she's thinking about holding the house for her relatives and her family members and her friends to visit while visiting Baltimore. And then all of a sudden, she starts operating this kennel illegally in the summer. And the only reason, the only reason we had this special hearing is because she got caught. She was trying to go in the back door of Spring Hill Road, and the neighbors were all going, "Where's all this traffic coming from?" And to her credit, she understood it, she tried to help, and then she pushed it towards the driveway that she has an easement with the coals. And I live directly across from that entrance. I gotta tell you, traffic heading east is a nightmare coming out of that road. Last fall, they had, I can't remember if it was September or October, but they had some tryout, there must've been 20 or 30 cars. And in the hearing, she tells us that none of her customers come to the kennel. I could tell you that's not true. So these people are trying to come out and turning left. If you guys knew where Craddock's Lane is, that you cannot turn left or west there because it's so dangerous, because of the sight lines. So a white pickup truck, they're all stacked up trying to get out of the driveway, there's a white pickup truck turning left, didn't have a payload in it, car was coming, spud out, and it spun its wheels and almost had a collision. Somebody's gonna get hurt there. Four cars later, and that same thing, there's a black Range Rover coming out. So you can't go left there, somebody's gonna get killed. The noise, I'm worried about the third party, you know, service providers, the people coming to pick up the waste, the people supplying food, you know, her customers don't come to the kennel, but they seem, you know, the 20 or 30 of them were that one day. And the noise with dogs, I gotta tell you, and I believe her when she says she can minimize barking, but there's gotta be a lot of work, a lot of time, to get these dogs where they're calmed down. She told us in the hearing that she has, you know, she charges 100% premium to the competition, because these wealthy dog owners can afford that, to pay, and that tells me that a lot of these dogs would be either put down, because I'm a big dog lover, don't get me wrong, put down or given away, that they're the worst of the worst. So you've got this, I don't know a lot about it, so just come, please, I'll let you guys talk.
If we could hold on, I would like to have a little order.
So, my conclusion is, my conclusion is, whether you're dealing with your children, your brother, your sister, even employee, you know, she's been a little sneaky and not genuine. And if you reward that behavior and give her this commercial kennel in a residential home, it's insanity.
Thank you.
And also, one last point, because I'm on a hill, you know, the buffer, and if you put up the screening, all that noise, that barking noise is gonna come up and come up the hill. And I welcome, I'll throw the party. You guys can come to my house, we got a 20-foot elevation, you can see the operation, you can see them coming in and out of the road to see the danger, I'll throw the party.
Thank you.
Tell me what you want.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. Councilman Jones?
I guess I have one quick question. Do you hear any noise coming off the golf course?
Golf course?
Yes. Greenspring Valley Golf Course.
No, it's a golf course.
But I mean, I'm assuming they come from France.
No, I'm very intimately involved in that operation, I can answer any question you want, I've run it for the last 20 years.
Okay. That was it.
And if you're asking about the golf course, we get complaints from a couple of neighbors that leave their dogs outside, and they're unattended, it's three dogs, and I get calls saying, you know, "These dogs are barking while playing golf, it's supposed to be nice and peaceful," trans quail. We get complaints about that, I can't imagine having 10 dogs outside. And dogs bark. They do.
I have a comment.
Thank you.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I have one comment.
Councilwoman Bevins?
It's not for discussion, I just, it doesn't sit well, again, I don't know these property owners, never met them, but it doesn't sit well with me when you use words like sneaky, because what they did was apply for a permit, and they received it. There's nothing sneaky about that. Just 'cause you didn't know what was going on with the property, I'm a property owner, I don't have to tell you what my intentions are on my property, you do what you want on your property, I do what I want on my property, as long as it's within the law. And this was within the law. So please don't throw those types of words around. Nothing sneaky. They applied for it, they received it.
Councilwoman Bevins?
Nothing sneaky.
I agree with you 100%. They were running this operation in the shadows before anybody even knew it. They were doing this last summer. When did they get the permits for their?
I don't know, I don't know that to be true. I don't know that to be true.
Somebody has those dates here, but they were running this last summer. It's been in the shadows, this is not a two-month, 30-day thing.
And I don't know that for sure.
It's been going six or seven months.
But you said it was a sneaky process. No, they did exactly what they're supposed to do according to the law.
If they're doing something without a proper permit, that's sneaky in my book. If there's another way they're supposed to-
They have a permit.
No, no, back last summer.
Well, I don't know that, I don't know when you purchased the property.
We have, we have some more speakers that I'm sure can address it. We got, yeah, we got more speakers.
Anyway, I'm holding, come to my house, open policy, I'm throwing the party.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jarrett. Our next speaker, Edward Lee, followed by Sam Moore. Is Sam Moore, yeah, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the council members. I am a little upset, in fact, I'm really upset. I'm a graduate of that Shatalani Elementary School some years ago, when I lived in the community. And I saw what happened after the school closed, and the gentleman who spoke earlier changed it into a three-bedroom house. Beautiful. I cannot imagine beyond anything in my lifetime, dogs running through that building, I just cannot imagine it. I really can't, and I'm very upset about it, I should not be. I'm here on behalf of my cousin, Alice G. Pende Hughes, who is in opposition of this dog kennel. I have a letter here that she would want me to read. I am respectfully submitting this statement, because I am a practicing attorney for over 40 years, and I have to be in court today. I am the current owner of 411 Greenspring Valley Road, and the proposed dog kennel will touch the back of my property, I am opposed to the dog kennel. My grandmother, Rebecca Wolfmaney, and her sisters Alma Jones and Nellie Diggs own this property. As a child, I spent summers and weekends at 411 Greenspring Valley Road. I had a treehouse at the back of the property with curtains. It is unconscionable that there is a proposal to provide a kennel in this property. Moreover, it is my understanding that the individuals who are supporting this kennel do not even live here. As a dog owner, I'm very aware of what is involved with animals in an area. Moreover, a review of other kennels in the area indicates that these facilities are in commercial areas. Moreover, Falls Road Animal and Daycare is closed, and there is no, is closed, and there is no need for facility in this area. My property faces Greenspring Valley Golf Course. It is imperative that the council considers the effect of this facility would have on our neighbors. Your consideration in this matter is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Sam Moore, followed by Deborah Shaw. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Members of the council, I'm Sam Moore, the general manager of the Greenspring Valley Hunt Club at 30 Greenspring Valley Road. I am a citizen of Baltimore County, and I'm here to represent my club in favor of Mr. Patoka's 7-19. Our president, Robert Brennan, is unable to be here today, I'm here representing him as well as the other 1,200 members of our club. I'd like to read to you, and paraphrase, a part of a letter that was sent to Mr. Patoka and Mr. Mayhew referencing the special exception hearing before. Many of our over 1,000 members and approximately 60 employees are lifelong dog lovers. However, the operation of a commercial kennel in a residential area with its attendant noise, traffic, and environmental impacts will necessarily have a significant adverse impact on our operation and on our neighbors in the surrounding residential community. Such a use is simply not consistent with the area and will adversely impact surrounding property values. We urge you to see the logic and reason in supporting Bill 719. On a personal note, I have been the manager at Greenspring for 21 years as of February. I've driven Greenspring Valley Road to work no fewer than 19,000 times. I did a little quick calculation sitting in my chair. That's a lot of time to do that in these hearings. But I must tell you, I think I've probably seen at least 100 accidents on the stretch from Park Heights to Craddock Lane, which was referenced before. The entrance and access point to this business is in a particularly dangerous spot. I think adding any traffic to that road unnecessarily is a mistake. As a property owner, I live in Ruxton on Laren Dull Club Road, I've got a neighbor who's about 100 yards away from me who owns a beautiful Rhodesian Ridgeback named Delilah, who I hear all day and all night. I think one dog barking is one too many. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Shaw, followed by Christine Corbett.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna have an attorney representing the commercial?
Yeah, Adam Rosenbach will be speaking.
He's signed up. Okay, good, thank you.
Did you have any? Good afternoon, almost evening, thank you for your patience, everyone, please.
Thank you for listening to All of Us, we're obviously a passionate roomful of people. I am a client of Follow My Lead, I've known Tiffany Sterns for the last three years, I think many of us, as well as our letters, can contest of her integrity, her amazing knowledge of animals, that's pretty unique. I guess I mostly want to talk about, speak on behalf of dogs. Many of us can either talk about the stories of our loves for our own dogs, or we'll talk about neighbors' dogs who are out of control. We're all very affected by dogs, and we've had a lot of life experiences that can speak to that. I think what's so amazing, and what I didn't know prior to working with Tiffany three years ago, is that there's an awful lot we can learn and do differently with dog behavior if we understand them more. What's amazing about this particular location, which is unusual, is it's in a beautiful nature spot. I think not only do dogs deserve to learn in that kind of an area, which is very unusual, I think we all think of typical kennels, and we've heard about them, that are concrete and pretty nasty, this is a beautiful, quiet area. I think what, I would have the same fears, not if I didn't know information about how Tiffany works, about barking dogs. It is amazing, when we talk about stories of dealing with difficult animals, Tiffany is a dog whisperer, and so when she starts to talk or work with animals, they respond amazingly differently than they maybe would even with their owner, because the owner doesn't know how to work with the animal. So we're really there to learn how to really understand our pets and animals. So I guess I want to say, I think that programs like this could really benefit society, and it sounds like a high-minded thing, but it's actually, we don't have enough outlets and ways to really, truly understand how to work with our animals. Tiffany teaches that, and that not only will help all the dogs that participate and their families, it'll help those neighbors and kind of society in general. So though, I think whenever other services come into a community, whether it be a new school, a new hospital, a fire station, the Jones Falls Expressway, anytime there's a new change coming on, it's difficult to live it when it's in your neighborhood and on your street. But those things still benefit the greater good, and I think that this program would definitely do that.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Christine Corbett, followed by Doug Carroll.
I've known Tiffany and Mary Francis for a little over two years. I am a full-time real estate agent and have been for 23 years. I work Baltimore City and Baltimore County and the area that is in discussion. So I do understand where everyone is coming from. I can say that were I to have a home next to their business, I would have no problem with it. In my spare time, which is kind of funny, I do help with the dog rescue, and I foster dogs, and because I currently don't have a dog of my own, I tend to sometimes get some of the more difficult-to-handle dogs. Dogs that maybe don't get along with other dogs, and I think probably everybody in this room knows someone who has a dog that doesn't get along with other dogs. And I can tell you that Tiffany takes these dogs that are kind of misfits and have been abused and mistreated, and she finds the way to make it right for them. She does it in a way that is impeccable. She is impeccable with her word, her training, the way she runs her business. She's a really unique and special person, and I have seen her business in action, both her coming to my home, to my neighborhood, working with many of my neighbors who had out-of-control barking dogs, and I have referred her to everyone I know. And she has great success. I have been out to the schoolhouse, and I have seen six or seven dogs there in recent weeks, since they have been permitted, they are in business, and there is no barking. It's so weird to walk into a building where there are six dogs, and none of them are barking. They're laying down in a corner, one's chewing on a bone, they're very relaxed, it's truly a unique thing. And I'm gonna end with Kathy, what you said in the beginning, the law is the law, and they have been approved, they've done it the right way, and I think to argue that is not really what we're here for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Patoka?
Yes, question for you. Oh, yes, sir.
So, thank you for your testimony.
Yes.
If I could speak to you in your capacity as a real estate professional.
Certainly.
So if you were showing a house, would you show the house, and would you say, "I want to let you know that there's a commercial dog kennel next door"?
If it was a Baltimore County kennel, like that type of kennel, absolutely. I mean, everybody does their due diligence when they buy a home. I recommend to all of my clients, and if I can assist them in doing that, yes, I will tell you this, knowing that operation, I would have no qualms about myself or anyone living next to that. And in fact, there's a beautiful house next to their property that I have my eye on, if the woman would ever like to sell it, I'd love to buy it. It's a cute little sustainable house, I don't know who owns it.
A second question, in your capacity as a real estate professional, do you think, in your professional opinion, that having a dog kennel next door to you raises your value or lowers your value of an adjacent property?
That depends on the dog kennel.
You think it could raise the property? Value?
It could not affect it at all.
Okay, well, thank you for your professional opinion.
Sure.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Doug Carroll, followed by Fred Smokin. Our next speaker, Doug Carroll, followed by Fred Smalkin.
Doug Carroll, in 2006, I bought a property next to this property because I saw it as an opportunity for a very specialized house site. It has 100 acres of preserved land next to it. It's five and a half acres. I arranged for septic assessment and well approval. I have full approvals for a house to be built there. On the other side is a historic schoolhouse. I don't believe that this law has ever been tested before. Every kennel case that I've looked at has asked for a private kennel. No one's asked for a commercial kennel in RC2 since 2001 because this law closed down the possibility until this hole in the, an error in the law was found. So I think we're talking about the only case where this has been applied. Ms. Bevins, I beg to differ on your opinion of investment in business in Baltimore. I bought this lot expecting it to be protected. It was protected. It was RC2 on one side with a historic house and 100 acres of protected land on the other side. The setback approved now is 22 feet. It's not 50 feet, it's 22 feet. It's 50 feet to the fence, but it's 22 feet from the house. It's 75 feet from the house site I have approved. That's the distance between you and the end of the wall there. So this probably represents a $300,000 loss to me. Now, that is business also, and it's way ahead of the time. I was 10 years before this proposal. The problem I have with it is noise and traffic. No client of Tiffany's is going to allow their dear dog to be along that property without going and inspecting that property first. We are talking about very high-end people. They are going to want to see the situation their dog is in. I have no doubt that Tiffany is probably one of the greatest dog trainers. I do not believe you can teach a dog not to bark unless it barks. It's absolutely counterintuitive. It has to bark. You might be able to get it to not bark, but it's got to bark. And then it gets, once that dog's trained not to bark, you get another dog that barks, and you've got to train it not to bark. So those are the problems I have with the devaluation in my property. I was never told of this. The legal advice they had was not even aware I had a house site there. The precedent of having this commercial kennel, it's a commercial kennel. It's not Tiffany's kennel, it's a commercial kennel. The precedent will not be able to be gotten rid of. If the kennel is abandoned when she moves there or sells the property, it'll go right back to ALJ with the argument that there's been a kennel there for 15 years, and it will be approved as a commercial kennel again. And it won't be her operation. In fact, there's nothing to keep her from selling this operation. There's many RC2 locations in Greenspring Valley and close-in in Baltimore County where for $1 million, a non-controversial commercial kennel could have been placed with 200 feet to 500 feet of setback and not destroyed or upset a community in the way that this is done. I wish she had come to me for some advice prior to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
To know that we weren't involved in this process. This wasn't a process for the county council. This is the first time we're hearing all this. This was not a process.
Yes, it was a process.
No, not for us, the county council.
It wasn't for you, but it was for, in 2001, this law was passed to stop a kennel on Greenspring Avenue, which actually was a better location than this particular one we're talking about.
And I wasn't around then.
And it closed it down.
Nobody else on this council was in office then.
Right.
So we didn't have anything to do with this.
But that's the law that exists now. It's the law that was used.
It was a suggestion from the planning office, and that's two different things.
No, the law was miswritten. It's never been tested. And now people notice, Adam Rosenblatt had the good sense to see there was a hole in the law that no one has ever seen before. This is the first time it's been brought up. That's why it is so applicable to this one case. And this was an error, and it's never been known before because you can look back and every time they ask for a private kennel instead of a commercial kennel, and all they had to do was ask for a commercial kennel.
There's an appeals process, I believe, right? That won't be with us, that's with someone else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Our next speaker, Fred Smalkin, followed by Martha Weiner. Good afternoon, Mr. Smalkin.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Thank you very much for having me here today and allowing me to speak in support of this bill. I'm here in sort of a mixed role. I'm a resident, was a resident until last September, when I actually moved into Councilman Marks's district. But for 10 years, I lived in Chatelani, approximately 500 feet from the subject property that is at the center of the dispute over this proposed bill. I raised my three children there. We've done wonderfully well as a family in the arms of a wonderful and welcoming community. I'd like to think that, by trade, I'm an attorney. I understand and appreciate the value of the rule of law. I understand, however, that the rule of law is founded fundamentally on fairness. And the fact is that mistakes can be made in both the judicial and the legislative process, and they were in this case, especially as it's coming home to roost in the neighborhood of Chatelani. The administrative law judge in issuing his opinion noticed, took notice in particular of two mistakes. He said, noted and recognized our arguments that the zoning classification for this neighborhood is wrong, and that as the planning council, as the zoning advisory commission noted, we are really built as a DR1 or an RC5 where commercial kennels are prohibited outright, that this neighborhood should not have a commercial kennel within it. And that also, no setback applied to a commercial kennel makes no sense. Nevertheless, the judge said he is bound to apply the law. What I would say to your honors here and the honorable councilmembers is that you are able to correct these mistakes in the law. I would urge you, even if you cannot feel that you, if you do not feel that you can make this a retroactive law, that you should pass the bill as proposed without the amendment so that it at least rectifies these clear mistakes that allow for an irrational system of zoning where there is no setback for a commercial kennel in a residential zone, but there is a setback for a private kennel in a residential zone, and there is a setback for a commercial kennel in a commercial zone. The existing structure absolutely makes no sense. That needs to be rectified. And if you feel that the courts or your executive branch needs to do what it may with a special exception, then I would urge you in any case to pass this bill, 719, as it is written. The only other remark that I would make is that we have not been able to see the license, the dates of licenses that were applied. Our understanding, and maybe Mr. Rosenblatt can correct us, is that this commercial kennel was in operation far before the special exception was applied for, and potentially before the licenses for a holding facility, which is required of commercial kennels, was also applied for. But hopefully, we can hear from Mr. Rosenblatt on that. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, Martha Weiner, followed by Philip Holmes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, councilmen, women and women. I'm speaking to you as the owner of a dog who has been both at a facility that is, quote, "a kennel" in a city with a chain-linked fence. And we sought the use of that kennel when my husband and I were both working, and we needed a place for caring for our dog while we were at work. Through that, we met Mary Frances Dale, and through her, we then later met Tiffany Sterns. Our dog had some adjustment problems being in that kennel, and she had some anxiety. And that was dealt with by understanding her behavior and being able to know that she needed more rest time than other dogs so that she would be calm and happy in that environment. We now are a client at the new location that has started. And I do want to take strong exception with some of the comments that have been made about the clientele of the business being high-end. My husband and I are now retirees. We, our dog does not need to go for dog enrichment, does not need to be in a facility because we are not available to be there. We choose to do that because we know that it makes our dog happier and healthier to be around other animals and to be in this particular environment. I have heard comment about how wealthy people are, and you do, you know, this is high-end. This is, and this is something we do because we value our animal, we value our dog. So I take exception to that. And there was a comment made about dogs that are barking, and those dogs should be put down. I take strong exception to a comment like that from someone who is in the neighborhood. I find that shocking and alarming. So I would ask, as you consider this regulation that is before you, it has come about because of the purchase of a property for the purpose of providing an enrichment and dog training and boarding facility, whether it's boarding by day or overnight when someone is, a family member is away. And it happens just to be in somebody's neighborhood, and they do not want that neighborhood disturbed, and it must be kept and preserved the way that they want it. And they will find any exception to any of the regulations to not allow it.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Philip Holmes, followed by Merle Rosen. Good afternoon, almost evening, Mr. Holmes.
Afternoon. I'll be very brief. My wife, Phyllis Goldberg, and I have been clients of Tiffany Sterns and Mary Frances for three years. And we know them to be people of high integrity. And some of the comments that were made, to the contrary, are flat-out wrong. They know how to run businesses. They're very careful. They're very respectful of their community. Second point, the building. I was there this past Sunday. It's a beautiful, historic building. They have committed to continue the integrity of that building. And as Ms. Sterns has indicated, she intends to make that her residence within 10 years. The third point I want to make is that they played by the rules. They did everything above board. And this bill, if passed, will put them out of business, which is terribly mean-spirited and wrong-headed. And it will also put other businesses out of business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Our next speaker is Merle Rosen, followed by Ellen Deal, I believe. Okay. So our next speaker, Ellen, is it Deal? Deal. Good afternoon, Ms. Deal. And then after that, we have Adam Rosenblatt.
I'm not going to get into all of the things that have been said because I don't think we could say anymore about the ability of these two women running a business and are dedicated to that. They're also dedicated to the very lovely, beautiful, historic, natural place that is the setting for this business, and they have no intention of destroying that. There have been a lot of misconceptions that have been voiced here today. I couldn't go into all of them, but much of it was very much off-base. The gentleman who spoke before me mentioned the condition of the house. They have gone to great expense to put a special flooring down to preserve the wood, beautiful wood floors that are underneath. The only thing that I can add is, through a very difficult legal experience that our family had years ago, we learned one thing. There is no justice, only the law. And in this case, and I thank Councilwoman Bevins for bringing this up and making it clear, that every "i" was dotted, every "t" crossed. There was no stealth attempt to put something over on people that they wanted to consider neighbors when they purchased this property. And I would say, if the residents of this community wish to go ahead and make changes in that law, that is their perfect right as citizens. But when people act in good faith to make a purchase and then have the rug pulled out, this is not right. This endangers all of us as citizens when we sign contracts and make good faith decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deal. Our next speaker, Adam Rosenblatt, followed by James Tingey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Councilman Patoka, welcome to Baltimore County. Isn't it fun being on the Baltimore County Council? Do you think you would spend this much time talking about dogs? I don't know. But anyway, this project is near and dear to me. I've been working with Tiffany and her husband for over a year now. She looked at a series of properties before selecting this one, and when she found this property and fell in love with it, we went over all of the rules and regulations that would govern her request to have a commercial kennel on this property. We knew there'd be a special exception hearing. We knew there'd be a permitting process, a licensing process. And when Tiffany made her substantial investment in this property, she had an understanding of all the rules in effect at that time. She hired an engineering firm. She hired an environmental consultant. She hired a law firm to file a petition for special exception. We filed that petition. We went to a hearing before the administrative law judge. We appeared in front of that hearing, and many of the same people that have testified for and against the relief showed up at that hearing, and the judge made his decision. When he made his decision, we proposed ourselves, which is somewhat unusual in a zoning case, but we were trying to be understanding of what impacts people would truly be concerned about here. Barking, so noise, traffic, waste. We had, we proposed our own conditions to address each and every one of these potential impacts. So the order came out, and it limits the number of total dogs that can be outside at any given time to 10, the number of dogs that can be boarded overnight to eight. If Tiffany ever sells the business or the property, the use terminates. Now, the judge understood that Tiffany is not your common, what you would think of as a commercial kennel, as you've heard testimony about today. So that condition is very important, and one that makes it clear that if she sells, use over, end of story. You'd have to go back to another hearing. We shuttle dogs to and from the property to reduce traffic impacts. And importantly, the ALJ imposed a condition that was suggested by the planning department to have a 50-foot setback from the fenced-in area to any property line. Now, we heard a reading from a 2001 planning board report on commercial kennels in general. This is a site-specific comment from the experts, the planning department, saying that 50 feet is the appropriate setback in this case. We followed that. We submitted a red-line plan that shows 50-foot setbacks from all property lines, got our approval. She applied for her fence permit, put in the fence, applied for her commercial kennel license, obtained the license, and is fully open and operating. In case there's any question about that, she is fully open and operating. She's had up to 10 dogs outside on the property and had multiple dogs boarded inside the house overnight. Let's be clear about the effect of this bill. 200 feet from each property line is 400 feet. This property is only 300 feet wide. It kills this project altogether. So I'd say, there's much more I can say, but I'd simply, I'd ask this council to let the judicial process carry on. Let us, if they're going to appeal, let us continue to make these arguments to the Board of Appeals, who are appointed by this council to review issues like this, to review petitions for special exception and determine if a proposed use is appropriate in that proposed location.
Counsel, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Councilman Ketch.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, was the kennel in operation prior to the application for the special exception?
There was never more than three dogs in, on the property at a time, as I understand it. Now, Ms. Sterns did have a mobile dog license, and she would take dogs on field trips, more than three dogs at a time. But as far as this particular property is concerned, she never boarded dogs on this property and never had more than three dogs trained on this property at a time until she got a relief. I do want to say, because there was some intimation that we then started operating without the permit or without the license, the fence has to be installed so they can inspect it and tell you that it meets the regulations. So we finished installing the fence and the second we were allowed to, we applied for and obtained that holding license.
Did anyone in the neighborhood call code enforcement? I mean, if they thought that this commercial kennel was in operation, did they call, complain to code enforcement? And was the property owner ever cited for running a commercial kennel without the proper permission?
That's a great question and one that I looked into before going to the special exception hearing because I had heard that that was an allegation. And no, there was never any contact with code enforcement, no correction notices, no citations whatsoever.
Did, when the decision from the ALJ came, the council, Council Lady Bevins, Woman, what do you want to be called?
I'm being too polite and delayed for dinner.
Okay.
You're about to be late for dinner.
Read the law where it said that indeed you can apply for permits, but you're taking a chance, in essence, if this is appealed, which it has been to the Board of Appeals. And, you know, you're taking a chance because if you lose in the Board of Appeals, you may have to remove everything you've done. I mean, that was clear to the owners of this property?
Hundred percent that's clear. And what we're asking is let us continue that path. Let us go to the Board of Appeals and if they find differently, the fence can be used as a residential fence. It's 50 feet from a property line. It's allowed under all of the zoning regulations, whether it's used residentially or commercially. So it could be a fence for up to three dogs without any commercial kennel approval. But we're asking you, please let us continue that path. They haven't appealed yet, they're obviously going to. But when they do, let us go to the Board of Appeals and let them weigh these impacts that you've heard about. You've heard it's great, you've heard it's terrible. Let the board make its decision. That's what we're asking.
Councilman Patoka?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenblatt, for your welcome to meet with Baltimore County. And thank you, everyone, for attending today.
We still have four members, four speakers.
The question I have for you, Mr. Rosenblatt, is when you and Ms. Sterns were drawing out a game plan, for lack of a better term, on what approvals you needed, did you define a community engagement plan? And if so, how did you roll that community engagement plan out?
So without really my suggestion or involvement, Ms. Sterns has been, has had a continuing dialogue with her neighbors. She, from before we had applied for anything, had engaged many of the neighbors in conversations about what she was planning to do on the property, what, if any, concerns they had. I know she's offered to all of them, please come into my house, come inspect my facility. And people have not taken her up on that offer. I know that, I can tell you personally, if there's any suggestion that comes from opposing council now, we'll certainly look into it. You know, it's, we always want to settle these disputes. If it can, if it can work out for everybody involved, that's the best situation.
Because I can't recommend strongly enough that when these, when an activity like this, a development activity of any sort, whether it's a kennel or another kind of development, it's always, I think strengthens the case if you have a strong community engagement plan. And then we, I think that we wouldn't be here if we had a community engagement plan. And to me, it's clear, talking to this neighbor and that neighbor is not really a community engagement plan.
I can say, though, just from dealing with these kinds of cases and only these kinds of cases, that fear is a very strong motivator. And when people see a new use go in, whether it's homes, whether it's some kind of commercial establishment, they're scared. And maybe I would be scared, too, if it was next to my house. But that's why there's a hearing process and you hear out all of the potential impacts and a judge has to make a decision as to whether it's appropriate.
In the second district, people are attracted to it because of its suburban and rural character. And, you know, that's why I ran for office and that's why I'm taking the position that I am.
I certainly understand. I just, maybe my last point, but no signage is being proposed, no new buildings, nothing but a fence. There's nothing...
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Crandall.
If I may, I don't, I didn't know if Izzy concluded his remarks.
Okay.
Mr. Rosenblatt, in my experience in reading ALJ decisions, often in cases like this, other agencies will be consulted. And you said that the planning board or planning department?
Planning Department.
The planning department suggested to the ALJ the 50-foot setback, correct?
Correct.
Were there other agencies consulted, environment, DPW?
Absolutely.
For agency, solicited for agency comment?
Yes. Anytime you apply for zoning relief, there's a committee called the Zoning Advisory Committee. It consists of Department of the Environment, of the Planning Department, of Development Plans Review, where the Department of Public Works will weigh in on any public works issues. Through DEPS, you get stormwater management, you get groundwater management, and you get environmental impact review. So there's a whole bunch of agencies that weigh in and they submit their comments, which often, like in this case, become conditions of approval.
Are there other questions for Mr. Rosenblatt? Councilman Jones?
Mr. Rosenblatt, I was just sitting here doing a little research. And is it true that kennels have been permitted in the RC-2 zone since 1979?
I apologize, but I don't know when it originally was approved.
Okay.
Or allowed to be in that zone.
According to my research, it's been permitted since 1979 and commercial kennels has been permitted in the RC-2 zone since 2001.
Okay.
I guess one of the things that, I mean, I perfectly understand every, oh, one more question. This gets me. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, 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 wait, hold the phone. Is that the property? So wait a minute, wait a minute. Is that the inside of the property?
Lucky dogs.
I'm sort of jealous.
The dogs are really lucky.
I...
Is that nice? It's a beautiful property, for sure.
It's very nice and nicely appointed, I might add, if the inside is what the pictures show. I'm sort of on the jealous side. But go ahead, I'm done.
I have a question for you. If the council passes this bill on any form, even say, for example, prospective, and the case goes on to appeal, the Board of Appeals, could they apply this current law and require 200-foot setback, effectively shutting this business down?
Yes. And if it's, if it's passed as initially proposed, I think it still kills this project. You'd have, the other side would move to dismiss the case and say it doesn't comply with current law.
Even if we pass the bill, same perspective?
If you pass the bill with language that specifically grandfatheres people who have applied for a petition for special exception for this use, or have appeared before the administrative law judge or in existence, then potentially there's a way where, because if the council believes that this should be the rule of law going forward, there's certainly a way to grandfather those in existence. And this case where it is in existence, but potentially is going to go before the Board of Appeals.
So, so in essence, if this were to pass, we, if there are kennels in an RC-2 that don't meet the setback requirements spelled out in this bill, then they would, even though they're granted, they would be non-compliant.
Correct.
Which would be an issue should the kennel owner try to, you know, attempt to sell the business, correct?
Definitely correct. And through some, even some very basic research, was able to find a number of operations that probably don't comply with this regulation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Rosenblatt? Everybody good? All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, James Tingey, followed by Kathy Gray. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Tingey.
I'm calling you late for dinner.
You are late for dinner, Kathy.
That's one of my favorite lines.
I'll just have another meeting after this, it don't matter.
No. My actual, Mr. Chairman and Council, my name is James Tingey. I'm a lifetime member of Trout Unlimited. I live in Greenspring Valley. I'm not too far away. I'm very familiar with some of the traffic issues. When I try to go to Reisterstown Road, I have to be very, very careful over there. Maryland Trout Unlimited is the local chapter of a national organization dedicated to preserving the water quality of our streams and rivers. We strongly opposed the application for special exemption to zoning that was filed to allow the operation of a commercial dog kennel on what is currently residential property, residential use. The kennel is located in a 100-year flood plain adjacent to the headwaters of the Jones Falls. The pristine stream is fed by a spring approximately 200 yards upstream from the development. The clean waters of the Jones Falls support a unique population of wild brown trout, which begins at the spring and extends the length of the stream nearly to the Baltimore city line. A lot of attention has been given to this stream, including a number of downstream restoration projects funded and supported by Baltimore County. It is our contention that this commercial development will constitute a serious threat to the water quality of the Jones Falls and to the trout that live there. A high concentration of dog activity will lead to denuded vegetation and excessive fecal and urinal waste, creating the potential for significant contamination and erosion of the bank of this extremely sensitive stream. Kennels typically use cleaning chemicals, including beach and antifungal solutions. In addition, many of the dogs could be on medications involving steroids, hormones, and antibacterial solutions. These contaminants in the runoff from this facility will pose a serious threat to the unique wild brown trout population of the stream and the deer that we herd drink from it. On this basis, we strongly support a 200-foot setback to minimize the actual size of this commercial enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Kathy Gray, followed by Kami Jasselin.
So they can't just decide, some of the yield mine time for dinner, everything to that, I think they can do that, on both sides of the government, I mean, they're a lot of cash, so they deal by time.
Thank, thank you, Kathy. And then our next speaker, Kami Jasselin, followed by our last speaker, Ellen Webb. Kami, are you here? What's that?
They both left.
Oh, they both left, okay, okay. Oh, so Kami and Ellen both left. All right, wrapping up, any final comments, questions, thoughts from the council? Councilman Crandall.
Mr. Chair, I think that this is the time for Councilman Jones to give his speech.
(laughing).
No, to give his speech about how
Being American.
this is a unique process to allow people to come before the council.
That's what he does.
Councilman Jones, I'd leave the floor to you.
That's great.
Thank you so much, certainly. Appreciate the introduction. And I do, I do want to thank everyone for coming out today on behalf of all my colleagues. I mean, this is, this is what, you know, democracy is all about and this is the beauty of, this is the beauty of your local government in the sense that we invite you to come in and testify and give your views and whether for or against something. And also, unlike other branches of government, here, you're always welcome, at the end of every council meeting, to sign up and speak on any subject you want for up to three minutes. This is a very difficult decision for me and I'm going to go home and sleep on it. I can tell you personally, I live in an RC-2 zone and my neighbor is a farmer and he has over 200 acres. He probably has, probably in the neighborhood of over 100 head of cattle and every other animal you can imagine. And my dogs, I have three, they, they have a tendency, they're not as well-trained as some of the dogs you deal with. I have a hard time keeping them from running across the street to his farm and he has about three dogs and every now and then they come over to my property. And, and I guess it sort of adds some flavor to, to where I live because several miles away, I can, on a quiet night, I can hear the train. It reminds me of like Petticoat Junction. I can hear the train in the distance blowing a horn as it's coming across the Marysville Road. I can hear it as it's going across Old Court Road. And I guess sort of adds flavor. And I can, you know, every now and then I hear the landing gear coming down on the airplanes and I look up and there's a plane going across and I guess we're in like the holding pattern on its way to BWI. And I guess, I guess my point is, it sort of adds flavor to me. I don't see these things as obtrusive or burdensome. And I hear some sounds coming from the farm across the street. You know, I don't know what the cows are doing or the bulls or whatever, but they make some noises at night, you know, I guess loud noises every now and then, but I mean, I guess that's all part of living in the country.
Councilman, I just wanted you to speak on the virtues of democracy.
I'm sorry, I guess, you know...
Got a little biography going here.
I think I'm done with it.
All right. Councilman Marks is chiming in here.
And, you know, one of the neat things about the council is we're a committee of the whole, unlike Annapolis, where there are committees and subcommittees. So we all become kind of experts in a lot of subjects. Today I learned that there are three reasons why dogs bark. I don't know the reasons yet. But thank you all, everyone, for coming. You know, this is a, there's a lot of impassioned speakers on both sides. Thank you to Councilman Patoka for his consistent champion of protections in your area.
Other thoughts, comments, you know, anything else anybody else wants to say for wrapping up here? Councilman Patoka?
I just want to again thank everyone on both sides for coming out tonight. I know that there's other things going on in your lives, but it's important that you're here. I've heard a lot, it's important that you've shared with my colleagues your thoughts about what's going on in your neighborhood. And so, thank you all very much.
Yeah, and I'll just close it and say, please, everyone have a safe drive home. And I did want to thank you all for your professionalism and mostly trying to keep it not personal. And, you know, sometimes we just have to agree to disagree. We're a council of seven, you know, but very seldom do we fight on, thankfully, fight on partisan issues. We tend to call them as we see them and we'll have different beliefs and views and we just try to make the best decisions that we can. So I did hear a ton of passion on both sides and I like Councilman Marks, like if there's ways that you guys can work together without getting the legislative branch involved or without other kind of mechanisms, you know, I'd encourage that. And I did want to just say thank you all for your patience. I mean, it's several hours of testimony and we do appreciate each of you taking the time out of your day to come out and really present your thoughts and feelings and views. So with that, everyone have a safe trip home and thank you for coming. Good night.